Good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the November 17, 2020 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. Just blessed this morning to have Pastor Jeff Pennington for the Smyrna First Baptist Church lead us in vacation and then Officer Desercher will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So those that will or unable, please stand.
It's an honor to be here with you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts that are just filled with gratitude. We're so thankful that your word tells us very clearly that the Heavenly Father rains down on us gifts from above each day. And Father, as we think about those gifts, we're so thankful for this community. The gift of elected officials who use their wisdom to give such guidance. We thank you so much for law enforcement officers who work so tirelessly and sacrificially to keep us safe. And Father, we just pray for your continued guidance in such a hard season. The Father, as we navigate this pandemic, we recognize there are so many people that are hurting, that are struggling, in profound ways that we might not see on the surface. And we pray that you give us the sensitivity and love to care well for people who are in need. Father, again, we thank you for this wonderful community. We thank you for this county. And Father, we just pray for your continued guidance in Christ name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Officer. And then as a reminder, last month, we read into the record the procedures for conducting these meetings by virtual processes, and we approved those approved those processes for this month and December, so we don't need to to read them back into the record again. So with that, John, you got the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. Today's hearing will be conducted both virtually and for in-person participation. We ask those that participate virtually that if they wish to oppose a case, they type into their Q and A box the case number and a signal that they want to oppose a case. For instance, if you're here to oppose a zoning case Z-13, you would punch into your Q and A box OPPZ-13. Additionally, if you want to also speak on the case that you're opposing, you would want to type in OPPZ-13SPEAK. If you would like to also support a case that's on today's agenda, the process will be very similar to that. You want to type in SUP for support, so it'll be SUP, case number Z-13, and that would register you in support of a specific zoning case. If you also want to speak in support of a zoning case, you would want to type in SUP, the case number is Z-13, and then SPEAK into your Q and A box. We would ask speakers that when it's your turn to speak, that your phone line will be unmuted. Please state who you are and where you live, and please also affirm that you've been sworn in, so you can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When the case is called, we're going to ask that the applicant stand or raise their hand to show they are in attendance. Then after recognizing the applicant or the representative, we're going to ask for anyone who's here opposing a zoning case. And when we call for opposition, we would ask that the opposition also raise their hand and stand up, so they so they can be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition and applicant, both sides will be asked to come forward to be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if they will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time. So you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. They may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. There are a number of cases on today's agenda which have been continued, and there is one case that has been withdrawn. The withdrawn case is resoning case Z-49, 2020, Sutter Hill Vineyard LP. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice, will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been held or continued by the staff or the planning commission, and these cases I'm about to read will not be heard today. First case is resoning case Z-13 of 2020, Arturo Martinez. This case was continued by the staff until the December 1, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-13 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-39 of 2020, KO Management Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the December 1, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-39 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-52 of 2020, Carl Edward Dills. This case was continued by the planning, excuse me, this case was continued by the staff until the December 1, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-52 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-53 of 2020, the Revive Land Group LLC. This case was held by the planning commission until the December 1, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-53 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-54 of 2020, Galaxi Childers Land LLC. This case was continued by the planning commission until the December 1, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-54 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-59 of 2020, Tamina A. Poultry, oh, excuse me, Pat Rury. This case was continued by the staff until the December 1, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-59 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-61 of 2020, Greenline Partners LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the December 1, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so resoning case Z-61 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z-65 of 2020, Christopher McMillan. This case was continued by the staff until the December 1, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-65 will not be heard today. And finally, on the printed agenda, ROD-1 of 2020, Atlantic Realty Acquisitions LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the December 1, 2020 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so ROD-1 of 2020 will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman and Board, there's one case on today's printed agenda which was scheduled to be heard, and the applicant has retained an attorney, so it's my understanding that the applicant would like to continue case number Z-56 until your December zoning hearing. And Z-56 is Venture Communities LLC. And the applicant is present, Mr. Chairman and Board, and staff would ask you to continue this case until your December hearing date.
It's me. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and John's correct that the applicant now has an attorney, and I spoke with Parks, and we both agree that it's good to continue this case to December. So I make a motion to continue Z-56 until the December zoning hearing.
We have a second name discussion. Hearing that, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just to note to record, that hearing is December 15 before the Board of Commissioners. Before we start the consent agenda, I just have a couple more announcements to make. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phone, because the ringing does interfere with broadcasting presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted to the board after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Okay.
And before I actually start reading the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
John, one second. Commissioner Burrow.
Well, I'm about to pull all those. I'm about to do that right now. Mr. Chairman and Board, before I start reading the consent agenda, there are three items on consent, which there is opposition here today, either virtually or in person. So the staff is going to pull other business item number 64, other business item number 65, and other business item number 69 off the consent agenda, and we're just kind of a hearing on those in their regular order.
So you want to put those on regular today?
Yeah, we'll put those on regular.
Okay, 65, 66, and 69?
Yes. Where's 64, 65, and 69?
64, 65, and 69.
Correct.
Okay.
John, can you clarify 65?
There is one person here in person, Commissioner Cupid, that is opposed to it, and I believe they had more people coming.
Okay.
So I'm not I'm not exactly aware of what their exact opposition is yet, but since there is someone here, I just I don't want to waste your time reading it. We're going to pull it anyway.
Understood. Thank you.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for November 17, 2020. First case on consent is resoning case Z-44 of 2020, Pete State Salvage Incorporated. The applicant is requesting rezoning from GC to LI for furniture sales, including light manufacturing and assembly, in landlot 637 of the 16th District. Their property is located on the west side of Kent Road, south of Blackpool Lane. The planning commission recommends it should be deletion to NRC, subject to the following conditions. Letter of agreeable conditions for Mr. Parks Huff dated October 28, 2020, and this is the second letter that the board received on this date, and it's marked second letter. Number two, staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposing rezoning case Z-44?
And John, Commissioner Burrow, I'd like to put some stipulations into the record.
Okay.
First of all, I need to add clarification on the October 28th.
The eighth letter from Mr. Parks Huff that was revised and sent on October 30, but dated October 28. No outside work and Sunday, Sunday hours if only in an emergency after 8:00 PM. And and that's all. Well, then that's not all. When you say staff comments and recommendations, the the there is a fee in lieu of for sidewalks which will be determined at plan review, and also the wall in front of the store is not to be removed, and the entrance will remain the same.
We got that.
Okay.
Okay. Next case on consent is rezoning case Z-45 of 2020, Spring House Kennesaw, request rezoning from LRC and GC to RSL for an assisted living memory care facility in landlot 55 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Hickory Grove Road, southeast of the intersection of Hickory Grove Place. Plan Commission recommends approval to the RSL zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, final site plan to be approved by the district commissioner. Number two, no variances issued on the site. And number three, staff comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposing rezoning case Z-45? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And case 56 was continued until your next hearing date. Resoning case Z-63 of 2020, Lenton Herring, request rezoning from R-20 to R-12 for a single-family residential subdivision in landlots 169 and 170 of the 18th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Oakdale Road, south of Farm Lake Drive. The planning commission recommends approval. It should be to the R-12 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan and building elevations to be approved by the district commissioner. Number two, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number three, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. And number four, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-63? No. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resoning case Z-64 of 2020, Lagos and Colony LLC, request rezoning from CRC and NS to CRC for light auto repair in landlots 14, 15, 58, and 59 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Austell Road and on the south side of Windy Hill Road. The planning commission recommends deletion to NRC, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan to be approved by the district commissioner. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated October 9, 2020. Number three, district commissioner to approve the building elevations. Number four, adherence to the Austell Road design guidelines. Number five, fire department comments and recommendations. Number six, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number seven, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number eight, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number nine, deletion to NRC. Number 10, for light automotive repair and auto parts store use only. Number 11, letters of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated October 9, 2020 and October 16, 2020, not otherwise in conflict. Number 12, provide for a 20-foot buffer along a portion of the eastern property line from the southeast corner to the existing dumpster enclosure. The buffer may be reduced as necessary for the new dumpster enclosure shown on the site plan. Number 13, all dumpsters to have rubber lids and rubber bump stops on lids. Number four, the new building to be fully, the new building to fully conform to the Austell Road design guidelines. The existing building does not need to conform to the design guidelines unless improvements are made that trigger conformity. Number 15, no more than one vehicle without a current registration to be parked outside. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-64? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
John, just want to add for district commissioner to approve final landscape plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda, LEP 19 of 2020, Karen Gooden, request a temporary land use permit for a temporary business, which is a home hair salon, in landlots 622 and 637 of the 19th District. The property is located at the terminus of Foxcroft Court. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP 19 for 12 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, hours of operation to be from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday, Thursday, and Friday only. Number two, all parking to be on a hardened surface. Number three, applicant to be the only employee, no independent contractors. And number four, staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 19? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda, SLUP 8 of 2020, 1420 Lockhart Holdings LLC, request a special land use permit for a transfer station and outside storage in landlots 131 and 132 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Lee Waters Road, at the terminus of Heatherland Drive. The planning commission recommends approval of SLUP 8, subject to the following conditions. Number one, truck access to remove dirt and debris to be from Kent Road, as long as the applicant has an easement from the railroad. And number two, staff comments and recommendations. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLUP 8 of 2020? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into.
Yeah, I would just like to thank the applicant for working with Planning Commissioner Judy Williams and I to get this into shape and and approved on consent. So thank you. Good job.
Okay, moving into other business items on the consent agenda. First one is other business item number 56 of 2020, which is to consider a site plan approval for Derek Cochran regarding rezoning application Z-128 of 2005, for property located on the south side of Jamis Road and on the north side of Locklear Way, in landlot 55 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, stormwater management comments, number two, Cobb DOT comments, and number three, site plan contained in the other business packet, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here in person opposing other business item number 56? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 66 of 2020 is to consider a reduction of minimum public road frontage for Matthew Stanci, from 75 feet to 40 feet for track one, and from 75 feet to 0 feet for track two and for track three. The property is located on the north side of Peach Hall Road, west of Sandy Plains Road, in landlots 243 and 262 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, water and sewer comments. Number two, fire department comments. And number three, site plan contained in the other business packet for the property line configuration and access. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here in person opposing other business item number 66? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 67 of 2020 is to consider a stipulation amendment for Massage Geeks LLC regarding rezoning application Z-63 of 1991, for property located on the east side of Kent Road, south of Feshal Road, in landlot 204 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Cobb DOT comments. And number three, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 67? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And finally, other business item number 68 of 2020 is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Brandon Investments LLC regarding rezoning application Z-41 of 2020, for property located on the northeast side of White Road, also known as Bob White Road, southeasterly of Factory Shaw's Road, in landlot 683 of the 18th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received October 13, 2020, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. And number two, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 68? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that completes your agenda, Mr. Chairman, as amended.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, I have another case to add to consent, which is Z-50.
Okay. Let me read that one in real quick. Resoning case Z-50 of 2020, Meritage Homes of Georgia, request rezoning from R-20 to R-8 for townhouse dwelling units attached, and single-family dwelling units detached in landlots 30 and 31 of the 17th District, and in landlots 1074 and 1147 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Floyd Road and on the north side of White Boulevard. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here in person opposing rezoning case Z-50 of 2020? Let the record show there's no one here in person opposing rezoning case Z-20.
And John, just a couple of.
Z-50 of 2020. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, there is one person here who wishes to speak who is opposed, and that's Mr. Charles Sprayberry from the Cobb County School District. And there's also one other person who's opposed who does not want to speak.
He doesn't want to speak.
He doesn't want to speak? Okay, so there's two people who are opposed to this.
Okay, can you say who the second one is?
Second one is Cosette Fanning.
Okay, then it may be pulled, then.
Okay, so let's just not hear that.
Yes, you can keep it.
Just hear it in its regular order, then.
Okay, thank you.
So we're going to leave that on regular?
Yes.
Leave it on regular.
Okay, we're good?
Good.
Okay, so that I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as revised. Discussion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is five to zero. All right, so the first one is Z-50.
Correct. So all those folks that were on consent that were approved, you're free to go. Just leave quietly as we're still having a hearing. First case we're going to hear today is rezoning case Z-50 of 2020, Meritage Homes of Georgia, request rezoning from R-20 to R-8 for townhouse dwelling units attached and single-family dwelling units detached in landlots 30 and 31 of the 17th District and landlots 1174 and 1147 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Floyd Road and on the north side of White Boulevard. The applicant is present, and there are two people here virtually who are opposed. At this point, I'll hand it over to Mr. Huff.
Morning, Mr. Huff. It's all yours.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Parks Huff with Sam's Larkin Huff, and I represent Meritage Homes in relation to this rezoning application before you this morning. This case has been held a couple of times for us to resolve a couple of small issues, and we're before you today with a planning commission unanimous recommendation for approval of this case. And go through the presentation here. The property is on Floyd Road. It is the property that is situated between a commercially zoned Lidl grocery store and an existing development known as Willowcrest. Meritage developed Willowcrest over the last couple of years. It's been a very successful community in the Mabelton area. And this property is the property that fills in between that commercial node and the existing Willowcrest neighborhood. It's always been a question how you transition between those two uses, and this property and this development does that transition well. This is the property showing that it is medium-density residential, and we are in compliance with the MDR land use plan when you consider Willowcrest as one development as a whole, which is the way it should be considered, because it's one development, one developer, and it is basically one community once it's fully developed out. One of the other key features of this development is a, one of the things that we held the case a couple of times with the planning commission to work on how the road structure would work, so we actually connect from the existing community and all the way down to White Boulevard, and there's a signalized intersection of White Boulevard and Floyd Road. So whenever possible, connectivity always helps with traffic congestion, giving people alternate routes to go places without having to get on Floyd Road, and also giving, providing them access to this appropriate signalized intersection. And there's a couple of key features about this site plan that I'd like to point out. Number one is, one of the issues we had to deal with is there's a very old home on the property, and the initial site plan had the home being removed. We revised the site plan and actually opened up, and you can see here how the home is not only preserved, but the situation, how it sits, how it's presented to Floyd Road is also preserved, something that was very important to the community, and we think will be a nice feature for the for the development. The development has, along the frontage, cottage homes that is consistent with the cottage homes that currently are along Floyd Road. So you're going to have a common streetscape as you go down Floyd Road to the grocery store, fills in this gap property and transitions to the commercial node at the intersection of White Boulevard and Floyd Road. This is the home that we have committed to preserving. It will be incorporated in the amenity package and used usable by the community as a clubhouse. And this is giving you an idea of the presentation of how it looks from the road. And again, it was important to us not, we could have put homes in front of it and preserved the home, but it would be behind and wouldn't have been attractive. So we preserved it that way. The other elements to the site plan include a good amount of green space and common areas that have parks that will provide passive recreation and active recreation, and tying it all together to be a wonderful, active community. One of the things that that I always like to point out in dealing with these type of cases is the fact that we are on a corridor, transportation corridor with bus stops and parking locations both north and south of this. And so this is. And so, this is where you... This is the reason why this was medium-density residential. This is where you put your density, this is where you put your intensity, on your transportation routes, close to your park and ride lots, close to commercial node. That's what you do with good planning. This is the architecture of the existing homes that line Floyd Road, create a nice streetscape with a frontage of the homes actually facing the road and sidewalks going out to a 10-foot wide sidewalk, a multi-use path that accesses the Silver Comet Trail. Again, it's building the community. This is the townhomes that we have proposed to be built, and a lot of these are very similar to, but with some updated architectural details from the previous development. So, we are pleased to have worked with Mableton Improvement Coalition, and they recommend approval of the application. They have worked hard with us to build a community that will be a nice addition to the Mableton area. We had some, and I think that one of the persons online is the... One of the existing residents in Willowcrest One, they have concerns about how the two communities, which will work and function together. Overall, this is a great opportunity to create the transition between the commercial node, the existing Willowcrest community, tie in the road access to those two areas to provide some alternate routes. I have a letter dated November 10 with details, many conditions that we were... Are agreeable to. These conditions were a result of a lot of meetings with the neighbors, the Mableton Improvement Coalition, the Planning Commission, and it is the basis of the recommendation for approval. So, we would ask that you follow the recommendations from your Planning Commission. Some of the key features of that include that we would have a contribution to a signal at Floyd Road and Glor Road. And I know I remember having sat here, and Mr. Chairman, you've made some comments about that that light needs to get done, so we've got a contribution towards that signal that can get done. So, we'll be helping to pay for that. And then, we've got rental maximum on it, a lot of conditions on how we're going to preserve the home. The product in there is a well-received product, is sold very well for the Meritage, and we've added some additional details on the architecture, and that is also detailed in my stipulation letter. So, this case, as I said, received unanimous recommendation for approval from your Planning Commission. We did... And to point out too, we held the case to... Actually, we removed six homes, six units, and increased a buffer adjacent to the existing Willowcrest community. So, it's a 50-foot buffer on the very western side of that development. So, that's one of the changes that we made. I wanted to just point that out. So, and that is included in the stipulation letter. So, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Clay Kirkley here with the Meritage is also here to answer the questions you have, but we ask that you follow your Planning Commission recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Huff. Okay, there was a person in opposition?
Our first virtual person in opposition is Charles Sprayberry. Charles, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Commissioner Voice and Commissioners. Approval of this unit, excuse me, approval of this petition will cause concern for the Cobb County School District as it will result in impact on enrollment in the schools already over capacity, specifically Mableton Elementary School. They will become over capacity by 40 students if this approved. Thank you for your time.
Good thing, Mr. Sprayberry.
Our second speaker is Cassette Fanning. Ms. Fanning, you are unmuted.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Cassette Fanning. I'm the resident of the current Willowcrest community. I just wanted to bring our concerns as a community to you all. We currently... Our neighborhood is currently about 50 acres with 150 to 160 homes. I saw on the plan that Mr. Huff had presented, it does state in the zoning that it is a single-family and townhomes. However, if you look at the plan, the single-family is... Has been sold to our community as bungalows. Our current community has about 35% townhomes, 19% bungalows, and 46% single-family homes. So, with this addition, it would drastically change the aesthetics of our neighborhood, taking it from a single-family home community to a townhome community. And our concerns as a neighborhood is that it would overdensify our neighborhood. We also have concerns about the traffic going through the neighborhood as we don't currently have speed bumps or anything to alleviate speeding. The road that would connect would create traffic right in front of our amenities, which is cause for a safety concern. We are just asking that you, you know, consider those safety concerns with traffic connecting White and Floyd Road through our community and completely changing our aesthetics of the community. We do feel blindsided by Meritage as it wasn't brought to her attention when we were buying our properties that this was going to change from a single-family community to a townhome community. We have... I know a few neighbors have emailed Ms. Cupid asking and bringing our concerns to her attention. We did ask that it would be a separate community if Meritage was approved. If not a separate community, that Meritage would be required to keep the same aesthetics, so basically keeping the same ratio of townhomes to single-family homes to bungalows. And thank you for your time and your consideration.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Cupid?
Is there anyone else speaking? I received correspondence from another resident that they may be online to speak.
Yes, we just got word that Robin Meyer would like to speak. I believe in support of the application.
Okay. I don't know if Parks used his time.
No, he's still... He's still had a couple of minutes.
Okay. Ms. Meyer, you are unmuted to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Robin Meyer, and I am the chairman of the zoning committee for the Mableton Improvement Coalition. We appreciate very much the work that has gone into improving this application since it was first filed, especially the access to White Boulevard, the better street layout within the community. We also appreciate the upgrades to architecture related to the townhomes and some of the items related to the bungalows as well. We strongly believe that residential development of this parcel is in the best interest of the community as a whole. There have been pressures over time to develop this property commercially, which we feel would not be in the best interest of either the current residents of our community or the current businesses in our community, as we have far more business and commercial zone properties, and we have businesses to fill them over the last couple of decades. So, we would encourage you to adopt or approve this application for rezoning. And I understand that there has been some discussion of a architectural review committee, and if that turns out to be the wish of the Board of Commissioners, we would be happy to participate in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more speakers?
No more.
Pro or con? Okay, now Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you, Chairman. As was acknowledged by the residents who spoke for this case, we have been communicating with a number of people in Mableton, in the surrounding area, in the neighboring subdivisions, both Meritage and other regarding this application for some time. And we have made so much progress on this. I put it on consent based off of recent correspondence received, but I know, Cassette, that you and I have been communicating about your concerns, and I know that you continue to have them from your comments here today. I do want to let you know that some of your concerns have been addressed in the stipulation letter where there will be a separate HOA for this community to ensure that the community is separate. And also, with the traffic concerns, this community will have access to White Boulevard and will not be traversed... Will not necessarily need to traverse through the existing Meritage community to have access to Floyd Road. But this also addresses concerns that the Floyd Road residents in the existing Meritage property had because in our initial zoning, there was discussion about having a traffic light there. If we can pull a map down at Glor Road, we have a lot of traffic coming out there. We had a lot of discussion on the board about... Yeah, but if you can just pull that down. We had a lot of discussion about traffic conditions there, which would be alleviated with this additional development. So, you're not looking at just one traffic light coming out of this development, but two, should this move forward. There are also concerns about buffers that the residents close to Electric Avenue had, and that's been increased with changes to this development as well. As Robin Meyer spoke, she acknowledged when I first came here, this area was designated to be a commercial development, and there was a lot of consternation from residents about how that would change the character along Floyd Road and make things challenging for the school across the street. And yet, even though we've reduced the intensity of that here today, I know that the school board has continued to have concerns about enrollment in our schools and the school impact or the impact on schools of new development. Our challenge, and my challenge as a Commissioner, is having an open relationship with school board members and not getting the response from the school board to build in reflection of where the county future land use map is. When we changed this future land use map, it was years ago, and I think we have work to do as to governmental organizations to update the plans for our schools to reflect that there is going to be residential growth in our county. But I also think that there are presumptions made about where students will choose to go to school, as there are multiple options today, even look at where we are compared to where we were just a year ago. But not everyone does choose to go to public school, and there is a presumption about the age of the students that they would all be going to Mableton Elementary School, as there are other ages that could be moving into this development and attending other schools that don't have that same concern. What this development does is it does reduce the commercial character of this parcel, which was the desire of the community for a long period of time. It does provide a nodal or step-down node away from the NRC commercial development that's at White Boulevard and Floyd and across the street. When you travel down Floyd, you are entering that commercial area. So, having the townhomes provides a step down, not only from the commercial, but from the commercial to the single-family homes. There has been a lot of interest in the bungalow homes that have built... That have been built along Floyd Road, which have really helped to improve the look and character of the community along Floyd. And so, I am pleased that those will be continued, but will still have the addition of townhomes, again, which softens the original layout of this community. And it also provides a mix of residential properties that Mableton doesn't have as much of, which could attract residents that may not be interested in single-family residential. Just want to look down at my other notes to make sure I'm addressing all of their concerns. There were some concerns, Parks, that I did want to share with you, and I didn't share this with you prior to today, but they have to do with elevations. If you don't mind approaching, I'd like to talk to you about it. Yes. When we were speaking about the elevations of the bungalows along Floyd, there were concerns that some of them looked the same along Floyd. So, I wanted to add a stipulation in that none of the same elevations or elevations with second-floor porches were to be within three homes of each other without district commissioner approval.
Okay.
Okay. And similar for the townhome community, that no more than one Bakersfield or Cartwright elevation within a cluster unless approved by district commissioner. So, it gives the option there, but it just helps to ensure that there's going to be variation in the elevation. And I saw there's a representative from Meritage who...
Yeah, he just... He gave him the thumbs up.
Okay. All right, very good. So, those two I wanted to add today, in addition to adding the Architectural Control Committee, just to make sure that there are no outstanding concerns.
And if I can add a point of clarification, it was my understanding that you stated you would like them to be two HOAs. My letter has...
One HOA.
One HOA, so we would...
Okay.
If that's your pleasure, we're great with that.
Okay.
Condition number 12.
I'm sorry, I realize that was changed.
Condition number 12 of the last sentence.
Is Cassette still on the line? Is she here?
Hi, Ms. Cupid. I'm still here.
Oh, okay, thank you. Cassette, there was discussion about having two HOAs versus one HOAs for the community to help to have some individual character or delineation between the new neighborhoods. Is that an outstanding concern of yours? Because, you know, there are arguments on both sides that if there were one HOAs, you'd be able to take advantage of economies of scale for the upkeep of both neighborhoods.
I think there were some concerns with one HOA, just having to maintain the historic home.
Okay.
If that would increase our HOA fees. So, I think as a neighborhood, we would be more comfortable with two HOAs.
Okay.
Commissioner Cupid? Could I... I just want to jump in on that because in my neighborhood, we have a single entrance, and we had homes that were added in the back that have a separate HOA, and it's nothing but a problem because there is no dialogue, or it's very difficult to have dialogue between the two.
Okay.
And in this community where you're going to have the roads connected, two HOAs, I mean, the second HOA could just say, you know what, we're not going to deal with you. Where if it's a single HOA, the homeowners that are in the existing development have a vote.
That's a good point, and, you know, we've gone back and forth on this, Cassette. And I think Commissioner Ott brings up a good point, that there are just some additional practical elements that could even frustrate the interests of your community if there are two HOAs and they are not accommodating to some of the interests that you may have that can... That could be impacted by that neighborhood.
I think for some of our neighbors, we've had some issues with the current HOA, non-responsive. And unfortunately, the way our contracts are written, we don't, as a community, take over the HOA until 100% of the homes are sold, which we're getting close to. So, I know that has been a concern of our neighbors, wanting to take over the HOA, and we wouldn't be able to do so much...
I see.
Further out until, you know, the second extension would be completed.
You know, Commissioner Cupid, what you could do is instead of the second HOA, get Meritage to agree that once 100% of the homes are sold in, if you want to call it phase one, that the HOA becomes active, and then the other ones are added to it instead of having a second HOA.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that's a great compromise. Is Meritage open to that? I see Parks are going back to speak to them.
What I would propose is that there be two HOAs, but a master HOA for the entire community and a separate HOA for each of the two phases. It would be my recommendation.
From one to three now.
There'll be one management company that's going to manage it all. And the master HOA would just control the streets.
I prefer Meritage's initial proposal to have the one HOA. I prefer Meritage's initial proposal to have the one HOA, just because we can, we can provide there be one management company, but that HOA has the, they can choose their own management company, and that's going to add another layer of frustration. Is there an issue with becoming an active HOA once the initial community? I'd like to know more about, what's the issue there? You can come on up, Clay, we can hear from you, too. It's all right.
I apologize for his sports team.
Oh, we'll take it.
Hey.
He's ACC.
I'm Clay Kirkland, Meritage Homes. As we're looking at the part of having the single HOA and turning things over, we want to make sure as we go through the whole neighborhood, the declarant rights and everything goes through and continues until we finish. We understand the neighborhood's concerns of letting them have the rights to be able to make decisions, and that's why when Parks had the dual, looking at the options of how we can do that and make sure they feel the ownership and part for their half. And that's partly why having the master and the two, we've been having a lot of discussions internally of what's the best way to go about it, and that's where we're open to having two, but obviously agree with having one in a whole does make a lot more sense. So-
The issue comes down to, I guess they're having some issues of ownership in the community and being able to transition from the current structure.
Correct.
To-
And- Commissioner Cupid, this might help. You know, typically in an HOA, every homeowner has a vote. And if it's a single HOA, Meritage is going to be owning until they sell the individual lots, all of the stuff that's in the second phase. So if you're concerned about the HOA coming into existence and then trying to dictate to Meritage how stuff is built, you're still going to have a lot, majority of the votes until a certain point in time. I think the way to go around a single HOA is that as a home is built and sold, it becomes part of the other HOA. But, you know, I just think that the folks that are in the existing homes, they're getting close to being able to have control over where they live. And I think the idea of two with a master, that's just a bureaucratic nightmare.
Right, I understand.
So-
What if we did two HOAs, existing HOA and our HOA, and that the HOAs would merge when we finish our phase?
How do you do that? How do you do that in law?
That's what I'm-
We can, we can change, I mean, they've got the declarant rights, they can make the covenants, make that-
Yeah, if you have the declarant rights, I guess you do have the legal authority to-
Because you'd have to have the first HOA change their bylaws or their laws to reflect that.
We can, they're the declarant, so Meritage can do that.
Well, they're not, they're already not in agreement now in their current condition.
Yeah, what they're saying is, and this is what the person in opposition said, that they're getting close, they don't get control of the HOA until 100% is sold.
Right.
So right now, Meritage is still in control of the HOA, and so they have the ability to change. And plus, in the new one, you would be able to write into it that upon it becoming active, it becomes a part of the other HOA.
When it's turned over, it'd be turned over to one HOA.
You know, I learned a long time ago, you've got to have unity of command, and this is no unity by having two HOAs.
Bill, our county attorney, can you just weigh in on this?
I mean, as far as the zoning's concerned, whether it's HOA or not, I think we'll be a bit further afield regarding whether it's approved, should be approved or not regarding the zoning. And the HOA issue would not really particularly be involved in that. And as far as the individual rights of the owners of the property, I'm not going to comment on what their rights would be or what their counsel would be representing for them, so.
Okay. I would feel comfortable with there being an approach where there could be two HOAs with them coming together, with us adding a clause. I mean, it's not, but I don't feel comfortable doing that from a zoning perspective. I don't know if that's something that could be included in your, in your HOA covenants that reflects that for the existing HOA, because I can't, how can I go in it? I can't bind your existing HOA. I can only speak to the zoning that's at hand for this parcel. So I can speak to what that intent is here, but I just can't speak to the current Meritage phase that's already been built.
Right. And our docs do allow for combinations of HOAs and neighborhoods coming through. It's into our docs to be able to do it, for similar instances as this.
Okay.
So it's already there, whether it's a shared amenity or being able to annex additional properties in. It's built in to our documents as they're written right now. So that I do know. It's just a matter of trying to make sure that, again, we want to help the original neighborhood and let them have a part of it. That's why we're open to the two, but I know that's a mess, and it's not necessarily the right way to push through on it, just the organization for it. So I, we are available to look at that and make sure our docs are correct and have that together.
And given the county attorney's comments, my suggestion, maybe just remove that last sentence of paragraph 12, and leave it up to contractual rights that are already in existence, not deal with it in zoning. Just the last sentence of paragraph 12, remove.
Hey, give me one moment. I see. Yes, and you know what? This gets to be a tough issue, because we're not just talking about management, but we're talking about access to amenities. And that second phase will have the clubhouse amenity for the existing HOA, but, I mean, they can bargain on their own to determine how they want to share their amenities. Maybe that's a bit of a carrot for the existing HOA to want to consider working with the, with the new HOA. So yes, I can take off that last sentence and just say the property will be subject to covenants and strict architectural controls. Or what I can add here, because you'll be the declarant, I can just add, it is the intent of the declarant that the subject property, just put that there and keep that sentence, and that way it'll, it'll-
Be on the record.
Signal that that discussion will take place, and you will be the declarant of the second one, so you'll be able to better negotiate that interest.
Thank you.
So for the clerk, in the November 10th letter from the applicant, there's a 12th paragraph where the last sentence reads, "The subject property will be added to the existing Lillo Crest HOA..." Dot, dot, dot. We'll just put in front of it, "It is the intent for the subject property." And that gives them some room. HOAs, they're already messy when you are in a HOA, and never dealt with this from here. Okay, so getting back to that, I would like to approve this zoning case Z50, subject to planning commissioner comments, the applicant's letter dated November 10th, 2020, subject to the change in paragraph 12, with the addition of the, an Architectural Control Committee to review building architecture with the Mableton Improvement Coalition, the applicant and county staff, with the district commissioner having final approval. And adding in a stipulation that none of the same elevations or elevations with second-floor porches to be within three homes of each other without district commissioner approval, and that no more than one Bakersfield and Cartwright elevations are to be within a townhome cluster without district commissioner approval. And those complete my stipulations, and then subjecting this to all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict.
Good discussion. Are you done? I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Pass this four to one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. Okay, LP 17.
Yes, sir. LEP 17, 2020, Evangelos M. Domestahouse and Joyce B. Domestahouse request a temporary land use permit for a special events facility in Land Lot 379 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Knight Road, north of the termination of Knight Lane. The applicant is present. There are currently seven people here virtually who are opposed, five of which wish to speak. And there's also one person here virtually who's in support, who wishes to speak. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposed or in support of LEP 17? All those opposed, please stand and raise your hands. Okay, all those in support here, please stand up and raise your hands.
That was good.
Mr. Chairman, there are 10 people here in person who are opposed, and there's no one here in person in support. So I would ask all those folks here in person to please come forward to be sworn in so they could present testimony to the board.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Moore?
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of Evan and Joyce Domestahouse in this application for a land use permit. You heard the presentation and hearing last month, and so I don't want to simply just go through that again. I do want to remind, remind you, and those that are here and listening in person and virtually, of this application and what we're actually, what we are proposing. We are proposing a temporary land use permit for their almost nine-acre tract that's located on Knight Road, for them to be able to hold limited special events, such as small weddings or small parties, that would be very limited in scope and nature, and highly restricted in terms of hours, times of day, and so forth, that would be very appropriate, given where this property is located off of Knight Road. And I'll go through those restrictions and remind you of those again in just a minute. I also want to remind everyone of, in the event that you have not been to this property, and show you these pictures again, I'll run through those, so you can really see the stunning beauty that the Domestahouses have built on their nine acres. They do wish to share this, they have been asked numerous, innumerable times, to be able to do exactly what they're proposing here, and want to be able to do that, but in a controlled manner that is respectful of their neighbors. In terms of the restrictions for the events, I want to get right to that, and there's a couple of people that also want to speak in favor, and I want to be mindful of their time as well. In terms of the restrictions for the events, we have agreed per our stipulation letter updated as of November 11th, that there is a maximum of two events per month, and that would have a maximum of 40 guests. So that's no more than two events per month, and no more at each of those events than 40 people. That is highly restricted, and much more restricted than any other special land use permit or land use permit, or temporary land use permit for such a special event facility that I can remember. We also deleted and are no longer requesting further events of more people. Importantly, nighttime events can only be held on Friday and Saturday and must conclude by 10:00 p.m. Any event on Sunday must conclude by 9:00 p.m. No events will be held at night, Monday through Thursday. Any daytime events, which would be, must be concluded by 6:00 p.m. Again, being very respectable of neighbors, time, and noise that can be generated. We are prohibiting live music. All parking must be on-site. There's no parking on the street, no off-site parking. We are only seeking a permit for one year as a temporary land use permit, and this permit is specific to the applicant or any member of the applicant's family. And the reason that is, is because they are being respectful to their neighbors. We have also committed in our stipulation letter that prior to any event, all adjacent neighbors will be notified in writing of the event, so they can be notified of that before any event that's held here, specific to the applicant, the applicant's family, because the idea and the goal here is to preserve what beauty they have created here, and set about a means for it to somewhat pay for itself, though in a very limited manner. This is not so they could run some profitable commercial venture in this location. It's simply to allow for what is essentially a beautiful private park to continue to survive and have the availability to do so through limited financial resources that can be applied to it by having small special events. I think it's also important that while we do have opposition, there's also tremendous support among the neighbors, and especially adjacent neighbors, for this application. You have a letter dated October 8th, 2020, in which you have several adjacent neighbors, four adjacent neighbors, that have supported this application, as well as other neighbors that are in very close proximity, also in Ebenezer Farm subdivision, which is adjacent to this property. Now, if we take a look at the overall aerial for this property that's about to go up, what you see is where that property is in the middle. You have to the right and adjacent is Ebenezer Farms. You have a lake that's not, or a pond that's not part of our property also adjacent to it. You'll also see that it's zoned R15. You have an R15 OSC aligned just to the north of this tract, and what you see with that R15 OSC is what you could possibly see with this property in the future, as opposed to the beautiful park that's preserved. And in a means to do that, what you see is development occurring. So I understand why neighbors may be opposed and they think it's a commercial venture, but I also think they need to think long-term and think about how this can be controlled and restricted in the manner that Domestahouses have provided here. Tight controls that are controlled by the county. This comes back in a year for renewal. If at any time prior to that there are issues, the county can revoke this permit and pull this thing, and if there's problems, it cannot be renewed by the board next year. So this is for a one-year period of time to give them a chance and show that they can do this and do this successfully and be good neighbors. With that, I'm going to, in my time and reserve, rest of the time for those who want to speak in favor of this application, who are adjacent neighbors, which is important. Thank you.
We now have three virtual speakers in support. The first one is Mrs. Asmiron. You are unmuted.
Thanks, ma'am.
Ms. Asmiron, you are unmuted, and you can speak. Maybe go to the next one. Juliana Rumbo. Ms. Rumbo, you are unmuted. Oh, they're saying that they're trying to speak. Go back to Mrs. Asmiron. Miss Asmiron? I'm not giving the green.
It's unmuted.
Okay. We can try our third, which is Sharon Robinson. Oh, they're saying that they're trying to speak. Go back to Mrs. Asmiron. I'm not giving the green.
It's unmuted.
Okay. We can try our third, which is Sharon Robinson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Ms. Robinson, go ahead. You are unmuted.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm adjacent to the Domestahouse property right on the lake, and I am not opposed at all. I'm excited for this and for them, and I am not worried about any noise. I think it's going to be a great thing for them and the surrounding community.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Still have four minutes for those in support.
I've asked them to try to unmute on their end to see if that's the issue, if you want to move forward. We've never had this issue, so.
I'd like the first speaker again.
You want to try her again?
Yeah, she's unmuted.
Okay, Mr. Moore, let's go ahead.
Well, the additional two that we're going to speak are also adjacent neighbors, just like Mrs. Robinson that spoke and who wanted to speak very much in favor of this application. They wanted to say that they are adjacent. They have witnessed prior events that have been private events that have been there. They do not see an issue with it whatsoever. They support fully and totally what the Domestahouses are trying to do. They do see this as a long-term benefit for their community and them as a neighbor. They see no issue whatsoever in terms of impact to them, their, how they live their lives, the quality of their life, and the value of their home. And they believe very strongly in that, strong enough that they have sent personal letters to the Planning Commission and to you as Commissioners. We're also willing to stand up and speak in favor of this application and understand that the Domestahouses are trying to do something here whereby you have a unique opportunity for their property and what they've done to set this up in a fashion where it's a highly-controlled environment that is respective and respectful of the community and what they want to do. What you're going to hear is, "We don't want a commercial venture in our neighborhood." This is not a commercial venture in anybody's neighborhood. This is essentially a private park in somebody's neighborhood that is seeking a way to uniquely preserve it for the next generation. That's what is being sought here, not some commercial venture, and certainly not a commercial venture that doesn't have tight restrictions and ultimately county control if it's not meeting those terms of those restrictions. With that, we respectfully request your approval of this application with the restrictions and stipulations we have included in our November eleventh letter. We thank you for your time and consideration, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, just want to keep in mind, well, there's multiple speakers, but you're only going to have ten minutes, so please be mind, keep in mind, did you have other speakers behind
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Eric Brol. I'm a resident of Knight Road, and I'm speaking in opposition to this. We have a large number of members of our community who are also opposed. Our primary reasons aren't because we think this is going to turn into some big profitable venture. Our reasons are because Knight Road is a very quiet, small community on a very small road. My house is right on Knight Road. In fact, I'm further south of the tennis courts. If you can scroll us down a little bit. The first house, I don't have the house, but there's a triangular one if you move the cursor down, right there. That's my house. Down one is my house. We're pretty far from where they are. Our concern is traffic. Knight Road is hilly, and we already have plenty of speeders on Knight Road. This is going to bring a lot more traffic to these events. The other issue is noise. They had an event on November the seventh at their property. I could hear it from my back deck. We were sitting there. We recorded, my wife recorded on her cellphone. I sent those recordings to each of the Commissioners last night. It was on an iPhone, like not some, you know, great recording device. It was just there. So it was a lot louder in person. We could make out the songs that were being played. We could hear the cheers. We could hear the screams. Ten p.m. I understand that that's great for folks going to sleep, but we love to enjoy our back deck during the evenings. We like to sit out there and have a glass of wine. This use is non-conforming. This use is not appropriate for this area. I love the features that they built as well, but we didn't ask for a private park. We didn't ask for a private venue here. We live in a very quiet community, and we'd like for it to stay that way. That's what brought a lot of folks to Knight Road. And if I, Commissioners, may I approach? I have something I'd like to give you. If you can pass this down. We have a hundred and nine signatures on this petition that was also sent to you guys, all against this. Plenty of folks on here heard the noise from the seventh. Plenty of folks got to experience what this is actually going to be like, and this has widespread community opposition. The Planning Board also voted in opposition to this and request that you vote no, and that vote was four to one. So I will give the rest of my time to other speakers, but I request that you vote no to this proposition. It's just inappropriate for Knight Road. It's just put in the wrong place. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Judy Sarden. I'm also on Knight Road. I'm a little bit further south than where, than where my colleague is. I'm in opposition to this as well, and it has nothing to do with whether they're making money. It's a beautiful property. I sent each of you a letter, also with pictures of actually the drive up and back from Knight Road. And you can see it's an undulating street. It's very small. It's very narrow. I have two children. There are many children on that road. There's a school bus stop just over the crest of the hill in front of their property. They're talking about having events during the weekday. Children are being dropped off at a school, at a bus stop there. My appeal is for the safety of our children. We have lots of children in this neighborhood. They go to bed before ten o'clock with the noise, with the added traffic on Knight Road. People moved to this neighborhood. We couldn't even get a street light installed on Knight Road because people moved to this area because they want quiet. They want peace. They want serenity. And this, this proposed zoning change is in total contradiction of that. Property values in our neighborhood have gone up significantly since we moved there six years ago. I cannot see the same people moving out to that area if they know there's a special events facility right down the road where there's going to be extra traffic. People from outside of the community, people who have no interest or connection in the community, with our families, with our way of life, constantly coming in and out. It's simply not good for the community. It's not good for property values, and frankly, it's not good for Cobb County tax revenues if our property values go down. I'll save the floor for anyone else who wants to speak.
Hi. My name is Emma Ponder, and I own the two lots just south, adjacent to and just south in front of the pond of this property. I bought my property in the seventies. It was all woods. The Domestahouses' property was all woods. Personally, I like that better, but that's neither here nor there. And I'm opposed to this because after the current owners moved in, they got, they put in a variance to put a fence right on our property line. Then they had installed it on our property line when Ebenezer Farms was developed. The developer had to take that fence down and replace it where it was supposed to be at the developer's expense. That was a concession he made. But in that fence is a pasture. They've said they're going to put excess parking in their pasture land. I could have a parking lot next to my lot if this were to go through. And so if it did go through, I would ask for a buffer, but I, you know, I'm hoping and praying it does not go through. I agree with everything everybody else has said, and Mr. Domestahouses, he tends to build things and then ask for forgiveness instead of asking for permission and then completing it. If we would have known that he was, had this intention, it would have been opposed before he did this work. So that's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Are there, is there an opposition on the phone?
There's no opposition on the phone.
There's none?
No.
On the phone? Okay.
No opposition on the phone.
All right. So I think that's, we've heard from everybody. In that case, Commissioner Brol, it's your case.
Thank you. Can, I want to make sure you leave the GIS map up.
GIS?
Leave this off. What's on there now? Because I do want to speak to some of the comments that were made. Okay, we did hear this last month and continued it or held it. Last month, for the record, we did also submit a letter from the, from nine of the close proximity and adjacent neighbors. I think five out of the nine were actually bordering, but letter in support. And then yesterday, I got the other petition that Eric spoke to this morning, and that needs to be entered for the record as well. You've got it. When this first came to us, I too had concerns as far as Knight Road, small collector road and residential area. And after meeting with the applicant and the attorney and visiting the site, and I think some of the other Commissioners have also been on the site to see exactly what the intention is and what the plans are if, if this gets approved. So there has been a lot of opposition as well and also some support with bordering neighbors. We've spoken to Ms. Ponder several times about her property that is right below this property, these two lots here where the cursor is. So this is, if, there is a lot of opposition, but I think with the intentions of what the applicant wants to do and with this being a land use permit, which can be revoked at any time, and it also has to come back before the board each year to be renewed. So after talking to some of the other Commissioners, I think that there may be support to try it for a year with some additional restrictions that I'm going to read to see if Dr. Domestahouse and his family can be good neighbors and go by the rules. And if they don't, I can guarantee you the site will be monitored by the neighbors and by code enforcement and, and myself to see, to make sure that they are in compliance with everything if, if this gets approved. So I also want to address the fire code. There have been some emails back and forth with Mary Lanning from the Fire Marshal's Office, she's in the back, and Mr. Moore. And because the events will be outdoors, they're, they still have to comply with certain fire code, the ordinance for fire code, and, and that will be stipulated as well and in the fire comments. So does anybody want to say anything before I start my motion or discussion?
Sure, Commissioner Brol. As you know, my assistant Kim and I went out there last week for a pretty detailed tour of the property with some pretty specific explanations as to how some of the things would work relative to what we've heard as the opposition or seen it in the emails, specifically some of the locations of what the events would be, how the parking would work. We asked quite a few questions about the different things that I had read in the comments from the opposition. Also, one thing I want to note, and I'm not even sure if the Chairman knows that this exists, but there is a special event facility on Lower Russell Road in the middle of neighborhoods. And it has been there for years, and it has operated within the community. There have not been issues. As a matter of fact, it also has a dog boarding kennel associated with it. And so I think that Commissioner Brol, your, your ideas of moving forward with a limited amount of events for a limited amount of time to give the, the opportunity to show whether or not it can work, and if it can't, it can be revoked, and at the end of the year, if it didn't work, it goes away. I think that it's, it's a beautiful piece of property. And yes, Knight Road is pretty narrow, but as you move up to that end of it, there are more homes on the southern part of it, and I think as you get down closer to this property, the homes are a little bit further apart. So I'm comfortable with the, some of the conditions I think you're going to put on it, but I just wanted to say that, you know, in going out and looking at it, I think that it's doable without being a huge burden on the neighbors.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I don't, I don't think you can take a look at this document here with all these signatures and not have a moment for pause. I mean, it seems like Mr. Domestahouse has to go find, go talk to these people and then get their approval to come off this list, because all we're doing here is we're just kicking the can down the road. I have, I have very, I have very much doubt in one year, this document's going to be, it's going to have fewer names on it than it has right now. And I've always said that, you know, if you get the support of the neighbors, then the board should echo that support by the neighbors. This clearly doesn't have the support of the neighbors. I was looking at the map. These people are all around the property. So I think that this is, till I saw this document, I was going to, I was sort of leaning towards giving them a one-year, one-year trial, maybe one event a month. They can do that already right now if he's hosting the event. So he's trying to turn this into a commercial venture. I don't know. I have a lot of issues with this right now, given all the work that the opponents have done to show that they have grave concerns about this property being used for the purposes as expressed.
Okay, well, I have some additional restrictions, but, yeah, sure.
Kevin Moore, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes, Commissioner.
Was there an event at this location on November seventh?
Yes, there was a small, it was, he had family over, yes. It was a small family event of no more than twenty people.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified.
There's also, if I could add, one of the speakers that would have been able to speak would have spoken to that event, personally checked with her. She's an adjacent, adjacent neighbor, and checked with her at that time of the event.
and checked with her at that time of the event to see if, if she was experiencing any problem or if there was any issue when she asked. She specifically said she had no issue whatsoever with it. So there are different stories, as you might expect.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Sure.
I guess because of the size of this, and I know this is in my district, you know, we have a lot of facilities that have private stables. They don't have to come in for a land use permit. They can board horses, people come and go, there's different events held. So, I really don't, this, this applicant is asking for permission to do that, what other property owners have the right to do without asking permission. So, I know you're going to be talking about additional stipulations, so I would be willing to support. Given, you know, other property owners that have more than two acres have the right to use their property as they see fit. He is asking permission to.
Commissioner Burrow, I have to agree wholeheartedly. I mean, as a private property owner, I'm allowed to have a reception at my house, and I can have 40 people. Now, you know, COVID aside, I can have an event at my house, and I can have 40 people, and I don't have to get permission.
You can have 100.
That's correct. And, and as Commissioner Gamble is saying, this is over two acres. And so the fact of the matter is, I, I think it's, we, as a board, we have to be really careful of imposing on a property owner's rights to use their property the way they want. Especially, as Commissioner Gamble says, it's allowed all the time throughout the county. I mean, this person owns property, it's over nine acres, they should be able to have it. All their, the only thing they're asking, I mean, the reality is, we heard about, oh, well, they do first and ask permission for forgiveness second. They're asking permission to do something that they are allowed to do privately now. And, and they're actually following the rules, coming in and saying, we want to do this, and because we might be charging some fee, we're going to get permission. But if they wanted to have a private event, they could have 100 people. And the county can do nothing about that. The only thing the county can do is if the noise goes past 11 o'clock in the noise ordinance, they can send the police out and tell them to shut it down. But the fact of the matter is, a lot of the issues that we're hearing about, they could do privately if, if they weren't charging for it. So they're asking permission to do something on a limited basis. I believe you're going to limit it to a certain number of events. I mean, I think we have to be real careful about crossing the line as to what property owner can do with their property.
But my understanding is they're going to charge for these events.
It, it will be rented out for weddings, receptions, birthday parties, things such as that.
And they can do that?
It will be rented out.
And what I'm hearing-
So there's a fee associated, and that's why they have to have a land use permit to operate as a business.
Right, that's the only reason they have to have a land use permit is because they would charge for an event. But if they were to have a private event, say, a daughter or whatever got married, they could have 100 people, and they could go forward with it without permission.
They have had charity events in the past where they didn't charge a fee, but it was to rate, it was for a charity like Make-A-Wish Foundation or Master Gardeners have had events there, but there was no, it wasn't rented out, which is why they need the land use permit to have private weddings or parties there that they would rent it out. And the, the private events where they don't charge can still go on on their private property. And they can have more than what, I'm going to restrict it to the maximum number and number of events per year right now. And they have been having others before COVID, of course, with more than, you know, 50 or 100 people.
So what happens if they come back, if this list comes back next year with the same signatories on it? What's your metric going to be that you're, you're going to revoke the, the LUP?
If they're, if they're valid complaints where they violate the, the steps on the permit, they can automatically be revoked by this board.
I get that part.
And when they come back, if there's any complaints or violations, I should say. Because that, they have to be valid, and they have to be violations of what is proposed or in the minutes, what's approved, if it's approved.
I understand there's violations, you can revoke the LUP. All I'm saying is, is that, let's see these neighbors come back in one year, all right? And again, I just point to the fact that they're surrounding this property. Would it act, they come back next year and say there's still an opposition? Is that a metric alone to revoke, to revoke the LUP in your eyes?
Well, if they're impacting the neighborhood and violating their, their land use permit, then it can be revoked at any time. It doesn't have to wait until they come back in a year, if it's approved for a year. So, we, we can revoke it at any time. But I, I have to rely on code enforcement to go out there and verify any complaints and, and cite them and, and, um, verify the violations.
Was there any code enforcement activity here before?
No, because they, they haven't rented it out. That's what they're asking for.
Well, and I think we need to remember, the only thing that they can be found in violation for is if they have more people in attendance than what you stipulate.
Correct.
You know, we can't go out, and again, this goes back down to individual property owner rights. You know, if your neighbor has a party and has 50, 100 people out on their back deck, yes, you can hear it, but unless it's in violation of the noise ordinance, they're not violating anything. So, the only thing for code enforcement would be as if they violate the stipulations that we have yet to hear.
This is not the approach this board took when there was a wedding event site in District Four during my first term. And they had significant limitations placed. I haven't heard complaints from property owners after they went through the permitting process. But we did weigh with significance the impact that, that wedding site was having around adjacent property owners. So, you know, I would really have to go back to kind of flesh out the perspective being here, shared here today versus that circumstance. I, I do think there are valid arguments on both sides about existing events. But I also believe from the residents that there's existing noise and impact too. And I don't know what the difference a year would make, but, you know, the, the beauty of a land use permit is that it's short-term, and you have the ability to come back and reassess it. And so I, I tend to always want to lean towards giving somebody a chance. But what I'm hearing from residents, they've already had a chance, and they've, and also from here from commissioners, they will continue to have that chance because, you know, you can have family gatherings and family events, and I think maybe this is, there's a broader construct than just them having the use of this property for commercial purposes. I lean towards supporting you because it's a short-term, 12-month land use permit, but I also side with the commissioner or with the chair, excuse me, that I think this is in a sense kicking a can down the road if you have residents who can, who are already telling you that they've experienced, you know, some negative impact by what's already been occurring on the property. And I think when you have things for commercial purposes, it introduces a different element. You know, people don't have that same connection to the property owner. You don't know is the property owner going to be on site? It's one thing if I can tell my Aunt Bertrice, you know, all right, all right, you know, you've had enough, come on inside. But it's another thing if I'm not present and people feel as if they have ownership of the site because they pay for it, so therefore they can do whatever they want to do. And, you know, you don't know what, what controls will be out there. So, I don't know if you have a stipulation as far as having someone who, who owns one of the applicants to be on site to help, to manage that, that, that may be helpful. I think the commercial character does add a different flair than what would be there than somebody having the ability to, to, to have this property rented out on their own right. Similar to a B and B, Airbnb, I mean, we've had discussions about this. I can have family members spend the night, but once you start renting it out to people you don't know, and you don't know what they're bringing, you don't know what their respect is going to be to neighbors, that's a completely different element, even though by right, I can have people sleep over in my home, I can have a party or gathering in my home. So, I would just, again, I lean towards, I always lean towards wanting to give people an opportunity, but I also think that needs to be balanced with having some very real protections for the vulnerability of the residents when this gets open to commercial use.
Commissioner Cupid, let me, let me kind of, the wedding chapel, you know, it's one thing if the property, that's all it's going to be used for. And, and I agree that if, you know, but these folks live here.
No, they live there.
Right, they live here.
For the wedding property, the owners live there, that was their home.
But on this property, they live there, they, I do not believe that they plan on going away. And one of the things, when we went on the tour, nothing is going to be in the house. Okay, that is, if you want to call it the private sanctuary of the folks that live there, okay? And so I, I think that, you know, we talk about the noise. There are days that I hear the noise from Dobbins, and I live two miles away. All right, it just, you know, sometimes noise travels. And the thing is, I, I think, you know, and I want to keep going back to what Commissioner Gamble said, you know, we're talking about individual property owner rights here. And everybody, and we've always talked about how zoning is kind of like we end up being Solomon, whereas the individual property owner's rights of the people, the applicant, are they crossing the line into the individual property owner rights of the, the neighbors, okay? And, and I think this is a unique situation because what they're being asked to use this property for is not 100%. And it is something that can be done on a private nature by the owners of the property every day of the week without the restrictions that Commissioner Burrow is going to put in and the ones that Kevin Moore talked about in his presentation. So, you know, and, and you're correct, the land use permit is all about giving either a business an opportunity to get started. We have, I mean, how many beauty salons do we have in houses? We let folks come and, and make a beauty salon in their house, which is, in a lot of ways, a lot more disruptive to a neighborhood because they have people coming and going every day of the week. You know, there is a lot more restrictions on this. And so I, I just think that we have to be careful as a board to, to make sure we're not crossing that line because we're talking about something that, that these folks could do on their own every day.
I, I don't disagree with you. And again, I think the commercial character, we have different, we have different zoning codes for commercial versus residential for a reason, even though somebody can do similar activity in both. And there's a, again, there's a difference when you're inviting someone to your home. And first, it's invited to commercial purposes. And I would just ask again, if you add us, that would be easier for me to support if there was some assurance that one of the property owners was going to be on site when there was an event that took place.
And I think they are, but we can stipulate that. Mr. Moore, can you come back up? I, I know the applicant lives on the property.
Yes.
But will he or an employee or manager be on site for each event?
Yes. Either he or a member of his family.
Or representative of the family.
Right, okay. So I'll just add that in my motion. Okay, so, just to be clear, well, I'll just make, I'll put everything in the motion. I will make a motion to approve LUP 17 with letter dated October 11th, I'm sorry, November 11th, from Mr. Kevin Moore with, um, number one in the STIP letter, which says applicants agree that special events shall be limited to no more than two times per month and no more than 40 attendees. That will be changed to no more than 10 events per year and no more than 35 attendees at each event. Two and three are regarding no live music, that remains. The schedule for the hours, nighttime events must conclude by 10:00 PM. And any nighttime Sunday event has to be over by 9:00 PM. And any daytime events, Monday through Thursday, conclude by 6:00 PM. And all that remains. Add the owner or a representative of the family must be on site for each event. And, um, of course, the no parking, all on-site parking is already in there, and that remains. And then all compliance with the fire code, which will be determined at plan review. And notification to the neighbors are, is in here. And I, I might suggest that maybe a committee of, a review committee of maybe, I don't know, six to 10 neighbors be formed and to monitor and, and to disseminate the, the notice of any events.
I, I have a problem with that, giving the neighbors, in essence, veto authority over what you do with your property. I, I think notifying the neighbors, and then the neighbors can notify you or code enforcement if there's a problem. But I don't think you need to create a committee of neighbors to monitor what goes on.
No, but to, well, to receive the notification. I mean, is he going to email 109 or put mailboxes?
He's going to email, he's going to notify how many people you tell them to, but I don't think you need to, you don't need to have a middle person, you need to just let these folks, when they're going to have an event, notify the people in the area.
Okay, so notification to the neighbors of each event prior to, pardon?
Within X amount of feet.
Yeah, I guess you could do the thousand-foot, the same thing you did for-
Like we do for zoning. We, essentially, we notify all property owners within 1,000 feet.
Yeah, before each event. And the neighbors will have me and, and code enforcement as a result of any complaints. And then I, let's see.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
And then the, the, this is for one year only, and it will have to come back to the board for renewal. And it can be revoked at any time pending any valid complaints or violations.
All right, discussion?
And all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Yes, I mean, if the applicant is amenable to having to mail out notices as if they're having a zoning 10 times a year, you know, then that's supportable. But I think if anything is onerous, that is one of the most onerous measures to the residents as far as even just put up a sign saying event, to, you know, event this Saturday or event, I mean. We have so many conflicts dealing with people for zoning, that say, I didn't get the notice, wasn't mailed out properly, I mean.
Well, they wouldn't have to mail them out to the, everyone within 1,000 feet. They could call or email or put up a sign.
I like your idea of the committee seeing much more, I mean, of six people than to mail out something to residents within a certain foot radius. It's almost, you know, if I have something at my home, I might tell my next-door neighbors that I'm having something. But, I mean, you're saying that part of the property, and then you're telling them to act like it's, it's a formal zoning every time they have an event. I think that's not, personally, again, if the applicant is amenable for this to pass, it just comes across as highly odd, discretionary, complicated, and that could be a subject of frustration if a resident says, I didn't get mine, I didn't get my letter. I mean, I deal with this unfortunately too often for zoning.
I actually agree with Commissioner Cupid's comment about a sign. I think the easiest way to do it would be to just have them put a sign out front saying that there's a, there is an, an event on this day at this time. And they just have to put it up a certain number of days prior to the event. Everybody in the neighborhood will see it, then when the event's over, they take the sign down. And I, I think Commissioner Cupid, that, that's a better idea.
In your November 11th STIP letter, you do have notification to the neighbors, but do you want to tell us how you're going to? do you want to tell us how you're going to notify everyone?
Yes, we, we've already stipulated that we would have notification, you know, written notification to the adjacent neighbors. We can, and we can define that as the adjacent property owners and those adjacent across night roads, so you're, so you're getting the full circle of adjacent neighbors. Those addresses are known, and those are mailboxes, and that's easily done and accomplished ahead of time, as well as the sign. I think that we, he would be very agreeable to that. The combination of those-
So you'll be, you'll be doing that up to 10 times a year possibly?
That's fine.
I mean, he, he may not get a, an event, 10 events a year. He may only have four or five or eight or nine. I don't, I mean, I don't know, that's going to be his business, but you, you will notify the adjacent neighbors?
Yes.
A week prior to the event?
That'll be fine.
Okay. So, yeah. So my, in my motion, if you'll strike the previous words of committee and thousand feet, whatever we said, and just put, it is a stipulation, but we can just add notification a week prior to adjac, to adjacent neighbors with signage at the property. I think that's-
Okay, any other questions to discussion? Hey, men, I'll call a question. All in favor, if you'd raise your hand. Pass this forward to one with the chairman in opposition. With that, let's take a nine-minute break. Nine minutes until 11 o'clock.
Land use permit number 18, Xing Huang, requests a temporary land use permit to allow more adults and vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot 517 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Piedmont Drive, south of Ullman Road. Is the applicant present?
Correct.
Yeah, the applicant is here. Is there anyone here in person opposed to LUP 18?
Yeah, three.
Let the record show there's three people here in person opposed to LUP 18. There's no one here virtually opposed to it. So with the applicant and the opposition, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning. My name is Xing Huang. I'm the owner of the 2944 Piedmont Drive Marietta, Georgia, zip code is 3066. I bought the house on July 1st. After I bought the house, I put it at a vest on the market. I rent my house to different, unrelated persons. On the July 3rd, or mostly in the same day, there are four people, there are four unrelated people, signed their leasing agreement because I rented one room to them. The cheapest rental is $500 only. That's why they are very welcome, want my bedroom. But after a few days, I got a violation notice from the Cobb County Code Enforcement. They told me I violated the code. I needed to, I can rent the house to one family, up to one, unrelated person only. So I, they gave me one month, allow the different people move out. When I told them the bad news, they were most cry. Because you know, under the COVID-19 pandemic, so many people cannot make enough money. They cannot, they do not have too much, they do not have enough income. That's why my way can help them. But unfortunately, I must obey the Cobb County's code. So within one month, three of them move out. When I went to the Cobb County Code Enforcement, one of the officer told me, if I wanted to do the same thing in the future, I can fire an application. So that's why today I come to here. I hope the board, the commission can allow me do the same thing, rent the house to up to six, unrelated, different person. When, when the Cobb County gave me a violation notice, I went to the tax commission, they sent two colleague into my house, take a remeasure. My house is actually, square feet is 28, 14 square feet. By the code and by the law, I can rent my house to one family, which have seven adult, they can live in my house. So now, I hope you can give me permission, rented to six, unrelated, different person only, less one. I know some of my labor against my plan. They, they concern my plan will decrease my community's value. They worry about, they work, make some trouble in the community. Actually, I do believe I have same page, we are, we are same page with my labor. I told, you know, there are four unrelated people living in my house in the July, only one month. But they never make any trouble in my house. They even never take any party in my front yard or backyard. They never make any noise in my community. If they did, I hope my labor can told you, that I really do believe they will never make any trouble in my community. Actually, why I rent one room to them with $500 are very welcome to them? Because they are low income class. Every day when they get up, they go to work. Then after night, they come home, then go to bed. Second day, in the morning, they go to work again. So I, I really, my labor concern the safety in my community, me too. I do, because I'm the owner in the property. So my English is not so good. I'm trying to let you understand what I'm seeing. So that's what I, I can see. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the speaker in opposition?
My name is James Shear, and I live in 2959 Piedmont Drive, directly across the street from the subject property, 2944 Piedmont Drive, Marietta. With me today, I have 26 signatures opposing any variance out of the 37 houses that do exist in our neighborhood. I opened my presentation with Marion Webster's definition of the word neighbor. It's one living or located near another. Two weeks ago, in the same forum, just like today, Xing Huang keeps referring to me and my neighbors as his neighbors. I personally find this dubious and disheartening. I ask everyone in this room to keep the definition in mind. Mr. Guan has never lived in our community, and to the best of my knowledge, never intends to. As per meeting with the zoning commission on November 3rd, 2020, I'm here to oppose Loop 18. I was at that meeting, in a vote to five to zero, the planning commission voted to deny the variance known as Loop 18. There are various reasons justifying the denial, some of which, and this is not the entire list, included maintaining the character of the neighborhood, maintaining the quality of single-family households, and protecting the diminishing values of properties. At issue two is the inability of a failing septic system to safely accommodate the maximum of a three-bedroom home, as reported by Cobb and Douglas Public Health. Previously, Mr. Guan's argument for approval relied on the need to increase the number of renters to basically cover his investment. At the beginning of his presentation, he explained his understanding of the Cobb County Code concerning single-family dwellings. He admittedly stated that on July 4th, 2020, he had four signed leases from four different individuals. After being cited by Cobb County Code Enforcement, violation number 2020-03658, he said he rented it to one family and one relative. That statement is simply not true. I personally followed up on this citation, and according to Officer Michael McFaul of Cobb County Code Enforcement, Mr. Guan was stated, in writing, I believe, that there were only two adults occupying the house. I told Officer McFaul, that was not the case. At that time, there were four unrelated adults renting rooms. Those four are the ones he referred to that signed the July 4th leases, which means he intentionally misled code enforcement and our neighborhood. During the planning hearing, Judy Williams made the statement that Mr. Guan told her he was asking for six people to live in the home. He hold, he told her that two women live there, and he was going to rent to four more women. At that time, and even today, there is a male individual leasing the basement apartment. He never mentioned this individual to Judy Williams. These examples, in addition to the ones presented at the previous hearing, have shown that Mr. Guan tends to misrepresent the truth. Mr. Guan came to my house a few hours after the hearing on November 3rd. He expressed his concern that my neighbors and I thought he was a bad person. He felt that we thought he was intentionally trying to disrupt the neighborhood. I reassured him that there was no personal animosity toward him from anyone in our neighborhood. I explained to him that our issue concerns the blatant disregard to Cobb County Code. He told me there were two people renting the upstairs, and there was a gentleman renting the basement apartment. I informed him that his girlfriend may be living there also. Whether she lives there or not, three unrelated adults are still in violation of that code. Mr. Guan assured me, according to his tenant, that his girlfriend was not living there. We had a cordial conversation that I felt was both respectful and informative. On November 15th, I witnessed a white pickup leave the residence at 7:00 a.m. I have photos of this truck in my phone right now. This was one of the six vehicles there at the time. At 4:40 p.m., it returned and drove around the back to where, to where the basement apartment is located. It was filled with various articles of furniture and household items. I did take a photo of the truck while I was entering the driveway. It left a couple hours later without those items. That truck has been there the last two days. During the planning commissioning hearing, Judy Williams made the statement that Mr. Guan either doesn't know the rules, or he is not following them. She wasn't sure which. I reserve that judgment to this board. I do know that this is just another example of an ongoing pattern of disregarding the rules and expectations set forth by Cobb County. At the planning hearing, we made a definitive case as to why this variance should be denied. They rejected Loop 18, five to zero. I'm not going to cover everything that was laid out at the hearing. I would presume there's a record of that meeting somewhere. I need to emphasize the concerns going forward are the deception, misrepresentation, and direct violations related to Cobb County Code. If leases must be adjusted to meet the requirements of the code, then unfortunately, Mr. Guan must carry that burden. If financial obligations cannot be met because of reduced rent payments, that too is a miscue on Mr. Guan's part. The obligation to know the rules and adhere to them falls squarely on his shoulders. I'd like to refer to a statement that I made back on November 3rd. The last four families that moved in our community are people in their early 30s. Three or four of these have young children. Overall, the average age of the residents has gone down. I bring this up as an important fact. These people are looking to invest in their homes and their families, and they have a right to protect both. Allowing six unrelated adults to occupy a single-family dwelling jeopardizes that right. There are codes in the book to protect such interests, and they should be adhered to as currently written. Neighbors, one living or located near another. The people that live near me are opposed to Loop 18, and they are my neighbors. We take care of another, I mean, we take care of one another, look after the best interests of our community, and share the highs and lows associated with being just that, a neighbor. I asked the Board of Commissioners to follow the lead of the planning commission and deny Loop 18 in its entirety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And John, what's the recommendation of the staff?
Just for denial.
Okay. So this is Commissioner Burrows.
This case was a result of code enforcement for more than two unrelated adults and additional parking violation. This is in a platted subdivision. Staff and PC have recommended denial, and I will make a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a second? We have a second discussion? Commissioner Burrow or Cupid?
I support Commissioner Burrows' recommendation. However, I do want to acknowledge some, a couple of the issues brought forward by this applicant. You mentioned in, the applicant mentioned in his comments that these were low-income tenants who are going to work, coming back every day. And there is recognition that, you know, housing unaffordability is an, is a significant issue in our county and across the metro region, and really nationally. And I think the pandemic is even exacerbating that, as people who are of lower income have been more burdened by layoffs and having their hours cut. I think the land use permit does provide a discretionary opportunity for the board to consider how people can continue to live affordably in the county. You know, we've had land use permit cases brought to us before, that, you know, you weigh the individual facts to determine how things move forward. And I think a factor that we haven't always had to consider is just the, the impact that the pandemic is going to wreak on people being able to afford their properties, and them considering single-family homes for rent. These cases are quite subjective, and, you know, as you found with the last case, the perspective of surrounding residents does weigh on how we consider these matters and the single-family character of communities. And I think that we may have to take a different approach to this in the future, but I think as we look at the individual things that we consider, I, I think one of the concerns that make this easier for me to support is just the, the possibility that the applicant may not have been forthright about what's going on in the property, you know? And, you know, if you have those nuanced situations that it may have been easier for residents to support if, if they understood what was going on there, and, and that's a concern for me. With this land use permit too, there's typically like a petition that goes around. Was there no petition for this? Did you have residents? I can't, I'm just curious, Commissioner, if he had a petition of adjacent residents that was submitted?
I don't, I didn't have anything. All I had was a code enforcement violation.
Yeah, so for the applicant or anyone else considering a land use permit, typically there's a petition that you get residents to sign off on to show that they
Agree.
agree or support what you're doing. And that has an impact, at least for me, on, you know, again, of, of the different conditions surrounding the application. And I, there wasn't any provision of that here. You saw that, even though there was a petition in the last case, we still moved forward and supported it, but, you know? It would have just been easier to weigh that in addition to, there's a code enforcement issue which wasn't on the last application, and also just some concern about there not being a level of, the applicant being forthright about how many people in the property. But just a, just a note to other commissioners, I think, especially as we continue to have impact of COVID on our community, that there may be other permits that come before, so people who are residents of Cobb experiencing real hardship, who, who are looking for ways to still live here and to do so affordably.
And also, just for clarification, I know Mr. Guan showed the tax commission sheet that allows, based on the square footage, you are allowed seven adults, based on your square footage of this property. However, we also have code that allows for only two unrelated adults in a, in a home, or a family and one outside, unrelated. And with asking for six unrelated, you're, you're not going to be in compliance. In the motion to deny, I would allow 60 days to come into compliance.
Okay, any other discussion? Can I call a question? All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Okay, SLUP 11.
SLEP 11, Habersham Wildwood LLC, SWH Windy Hill LLC, request a special land use permit for a suite hotel in Land Lot 941 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Windy Hill Road, east of Paris Fair Road. Is the applicant present?
Is the applicant here for SLEP 11? Mr. Chairman, the applicant is not present. There are two people here virtually that are opposed that wish to speak, and there's one person here in person that wishes to oppose this case.
Mr. Chairman, since the applicant's not here and the planning commission recommended denial, I would like to support the planning commission recommendation and make a motion to deny.
Second. Second that motion, any other discussion? Okay, now I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes four to zero, Commissioner Cupid in absence. Okay, on to OB 38.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to move on to the next one, so she gives me?
Yeah, give me a second here. So I'm just trying to figure out who's, OB 64, is it Commissioner Gamble? Yeah, okay, let's do OB 64, okay?
Okay.
Let me read for you, Commissioner Gamble?
Okay, OB 64, 2020, is to consider a site plan approval for blast-off construction regarding rezoning application number 231 of 1986, for property located at the southwest intersection of Brookstone Drive and Brookstone Walk. And it's located in Land Lot 225 of the 20th District. By way of background, Mr. Chairman and Board, the subject property is zoned office and institutional with a zoning condition that the Board of Commissioners approve the final plans prior to the building permits. The applicant would like to develop a 12,388-square-foot child daycare nursery school on the property. Zoning criteria, such as parking setbacks and previous surface, are met. The proposal does have a one-way circulation plan for dropping off and picking up children. If approved, all previous conditions should remain in effect. The applicant is present, Mr. Chairman and Board, and there are seven people here virtually opposed, five of those who wish to speak. Is there anyone here in person who wishes to speak in opposition to OB 64?
There's one here in person. So at this point, I'll turn it over to, to Ms. Smith to make her presentation. And I would ask the one person here in person opposing, please come forward to be sworn in.
I'm Ellen Smith, for the record, with Parker Poe, Adams &amp; Bernstein. And I'll take you back to the past, to 1986, before any of you thought you were going to be commissioners or run in any elections at all. This condition and this application comes before you from a 1986 condition for site plan approval. This property was part of the over 1,000 acres that was approved and taken in for zoning for not only the Brookstone Homeowners Association in that neighborhood, but for a number of other properties. And this parcel, which is 3.288 acres, remains unimproved, and we have to come back before you to get a building permit for site plan approval. So I have the pleasure of representing the applicant this morning. This property sits on the southwestern corner of Brookstone Drive and Brookstone Walk. It's approximately, Brookstone Drive is 488 feet, Brookstone Walk has frontage of 182 feet. It's across Brookstone Drive from the Brookstone Animal Hospital. It's adjacent to a dentist's office. It's in fact, the only unimproved parcel within the area. It's situated directly behind the public supermarket at Brookstone Village and west of the fully developed intersection of Stylesborough Road and Mars Hill Road. It's immediately, immediately to the west or rear of the property is the lake, or frankly, the retention pond, one of the retention ponds for the neighborhood. And this property was donated to Wellstar by Jim Willoughby, who was one of the original property owners and development, developers. This donation was intended to provide funding for childcare. The proposed use of the property, my client is the buyer, would further that intent by providing childcare facility, which is an approved use in the district. There were a number of conditions I already mentioned to the residential development of the over 1,000 acres, and we're just here before you for site plan approval. The site plan that we proposed is up on your screen, and as John mentioned, there is one-way circulation coming in from Brookstone Drive, exiting on Brookstone Walk. And the topo of this property, which you can't tell from the site plan, is challenging. It meets street level at the corner, but drops significantly to a creek and then to the retention pond. The approximately 12,400-square-foot building is oriented to meet those topo concerns, and it honors, the project will honor existing stream buffers. There's a stream buffer that is just to the west on the site plan before the retention pond, and traffic is proposed to be one-way to ensure drop-off. As you can see, sort of highlighted in orange, the cars would pull in, they would pull under the port of cachere. the cars would pull in, they would pull under the port of cachere and drop off children. Every child is escorted into the building. There is a shuttle that would pick up students in the afternoon who are in elementary school, middle school, for after-school programming. That shuttle also pulls under the port of cachere and drops off. The location of the property access points are dictated by existing, by distance from existing intersection as well as slope and curvature of existing right-of-way. And applicant has worked with Cobb DOT to ensure that we are meeting some of their comments. Just a little bit of background with respect to the building. It's designed, and we have agreed, to a cap of 169 students. Legacy Academy operates nursing, nursing homes, not nursing homes, childcare facilities in Georgia, South Carolina, Texas, and Tennessee. And there is one already existing in Cobb County. It's just within the city of Smyrna, city limits. So you have had one for several years within the county. It is designed to provide services five days a week, 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. And the operators, just by way of background, are local. They're a husband-wife team, Tara Wolf, who is a distinguished Army veteran with a collective education background, and her husband, Marietta native Justin Williamson. They would operate this facility, and I think it's always nice to hear that it's a homegrown operation. We did reach out to the Brookstone Homeowners Association, and they had five concerns that I'll summarize that I think they're here as well. The first was traffic flow and building orientation on-site. They actually asked if we could flip the building, if we could have one set of access points on Brookstone Walk instead of having any access on Brookstone Drive. Because of site distance, topo, and all of the other child safety reasons, we couldn't reorient the building. They were concerned about aesthetic. Particularly, they didn't like the new Regent's Bank that's painted black at the intersection. So they were concerned about aesthetic. They were concerned about off-site retention and just hydrology for the site. Where you see the dotted line around the parking in the back of the building, there's playground, that's also a fence. The rest of that area will be undisturbed. And all, obviously, all hydrology will be maintained on-site with no impact to the HOA. They were concerned about hosting events and parking on the street. We've provided a condition for that. And they were concerned about landscape. Bless you. Good thing you're six feet away. We, we, you have to laugh a little bit.
I am behind my mask.
We did include a proposed letter of stipulations dated November 10th that address a number of those concerns to the extent that we could. I do have a, just to show up, just to give you a visual, and these were included with our letter. This is, sorry, the typical design and is what is proposed here. It's in keeping with what the HOA proposed. We also agree to a stipulation that the district commissioner approved the final landscape plan and building elevation. Just because y'all will appreciate it, this project has gone through plans review concurrently with this application. So they were already in and had submitted for plans review before they discovered this 1986 zoning condition. So the benefit to that is that they have had the opportunity for the arborist and DOT to consider their site plan. We've addressed those plans review comments. We agree to a maximum of 169 children. That's what Cobb DOT traffic engineers have considered with respect to stacking and circulation. And we agree to a condition, and I have it handwritten, and I apologize, but I think John may have it typewritten, that applicant shall ensure that all parking and drop-off/pickup queue be contained within the development parking lot and not extend into the right-of-way. If parking or the site queue impact the adjacent roadway in future operations, applicant shall be required to coordinate with Cobb DOT to create a mitigation plan. A mitigation plan can include, but is not limited to, the following: staggered times for any future classes, modified internal striping slash queue management or turn lanes. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I appreciate your consideration of this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have those in opposition?
Two virtual speakers online. Derek Treisenberg. You're unmuted. Oh, did you want to go with the?
We'll go ahead and do the ones online.
This is Derek.
Go ahead, sir.
This is Derek, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm a resident of Brookstone. I don't know whether I'm necessarily opposed or in favor, but I'm sorry, I just came back to my computer just a minute ago. I was distracted for a moment with work. But I, we've been, we've gotten the updates on the traffic flow proposals from Rich Hints, our association manager. And so I guess my concern too is the backflow of traffic onto Brookstone Drive. And I really like the proposal. What they were trying to do is, you know, get the traffic to turn left onto Brookstone Walk and then enter into the Legacy Academy from the right and then exit out on Brookstone Drive. I'm not, I'm not a resident within 1,000 yards or 1,000 feet, whatever the, whatever the condition was to get the information to those residents, but I'm not far, probably not more than a mile. And I'm just concerned that the traffic patterns, whatever, you know, busy times are going to cause disruptions to a lot of our daily, you know, our daily commuting and our daily in and out of that, that area. So I just wanted to hear if there's more updates on that, on that proposal to, to reverse the traffic flow into the direction that was requested and/or the other proposal, which was to widen Brookstone Drive so that there would be a left-hand turn lane if, in fact, that, the original request wasn't, wasn't granted.
Okay, well, there was a present, during the presentation, Ms. Smith presented her proposal, and I'm gonna let Commissioner Gamble address that in her comments. So with that, I thank you for your, for your, for your comments, sir.
Do you want to do the in-person or?
Yeah, let's do the one in-person, sure.
My name is Richard Hints. I'm the association manager for the Brookstone HOA. For those of you that might not be familiar, we have approximately 1,500 homes, and roughly half of them are going to be impacted as they use this Brookstone Drive roadway to access shopping, post office, et cetera, as well as several other neighborhoods nearby, Heatherbrook, Brookstone Commons, Brookstone Manor, Star Lake, and others. The concern is, in the morning hours, as people are arriving, they're going to be coming down, the roadway necks down and narrows into two travel lanes only. And then they're going to stop and queue in the travel lane, making a left turn across the outgoing commuter traffic. In the afternoons, they're going to be coming in trying to pick up coming that same way, and we're going to have people returning home from work coming in a downhill slope into a blind curve to then hit the brakes and try to avoid rear-ending people. The other concern, of course, is the parking. We really, with events and whatnot, you know, they're going to have some events they've offered that they're going to try to have their people park off-site. But as we all know as parents, there's always the guy who shows up late at the last minute, parks on the street in front of the building. And we really want to try to address that and make sure for safety's sake that we don't end up with accidents. We, on behalf of the Brookstone Country Club, operated by Club Corp, their golf course is directly behind this. It's within 200 feet of the playground. And there's some concerns about distractions of the play of golf and, you know, how that would impact the members and tournaments and whatnot to go on. And again, that pond adjacent to this property was somehow bequeathed to the HOA to maintain. The only access we have to maintain it is on the very back edge of the subject property. The way the banks run, we can't get to it from Brookstone Drive. There's a neighboring residence that we can't get to. They also have a very steep bank. I believe that the staff had recommended that we use the golf course, but if, they run seven days a week, and if we start running dump trucks up and down the cart path, I think they'd object. So in order for us to maintain that property, and just for a little background, a couple of years ago, regarding another detention pond, we got a letter from the county saying we were going to get fined $10,000 a day if we didn't go in and clean up the pond. So if we don't have this access, I don't know how we're going to manage to maintain that facility. And for these and other reasons that we do oppose this application at this time. And if they wanted to come back and revisit this with us and maybe size down the building a little bit, being that they were building 12,000 square feet for a capacity of up to 250 kids, now they're going to be much less, we'd be willing to work with them and try to come up with a solution for everybody. Thank you very much for your time today.
All right, thank you, sir.
We have one more virtual speaker in opposition, Martin Cronwell. Martin, you are unmuted.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to, nice to be with everybody virtually. First of all, I'd like to thank Richard Hints for keeping the homeowners apprised. I am a member of the Homeowners Association. I live in the Brookstone subdivision, about three-quarters of a mile from the subject property. There's been a good bit of communication back and forth on this issue over the last month or so. The information has been conflicting. I'm not sure where we are on this. Richard had sent a notice to the homeowners in early October. Pardon me. His comment said that Legacy, the Academy assures us they do not hold events or large meetings at the school. There should be no parking on Brookstone Drive or Brookstone Walk during their operations. Good, good to know. Ms. Smith submitted a, a letter, a letter of stipulations on October 14th. She makes a comment that the issue at hand is they have paramount importance for child safety, which we think is great. We think that child safety should extend not only to the students at the academy, but to the children in the, in the community. She mentions in her letter of stipulation that parking for the events held at the property shall be off-site through private agreements negotiated with adjacent property owners and not on public right-of-way. I'm not sure what to make of her stipulation that parking for events held at the property, you know, will be held in, under private agreements. I don't know how to reconcile that against the statements that Legacy made to Mr. Hints, saying that they do not hold events or large meetings at the school. So if there are no events to be held, then I'm not sure why there would be parking needed. Ms. Smith submitted a supplement and letter of stipulations on November 10th. And she said that events parking may be off-site through private agreements negotiated with adjacent property owners. I think we're all aware the distinction between parking, parking for events held at the property shall be off-site, being weakened to parking for events may be off-site. They, they may, of course, not be off-site. A couple of the speakers have spoken about the traffic flow in the area. Richard mentioned that the, the traffic flow, proposed traffic flow by the applicant coming down Brookstone Drive, making a left-hand turn into the property, is on a downhill at the outlet of a blind intersection. He's absolutely correct. I walked the property a few weeks ago. There's another point that's not shown on the applicant's site plan. At the location of the entrance drive, there's currently a speed hump. The speed humps were installed in the subdivision, geez, I'm approximately 20 years ago. The county has, the county DOT has regulations and requirements as to the placement of speed humps. I don't believe that a speed hump can be placed at the, at the entrance, you know, at a roadway entrance off of Main Drive. The requirements are so many feet on a straight line right-of-way, so many feet around a bend, so many feet between speed humps. The county has very well-defined requirements, and I don't think this one complies with those requirements. 169 students max, that's fine. You know, if, if, if every child at the school had a sibling and they were being dropped off two at a time, that would be 84 vehicles a day, up to 84 vehicles a day, presumably all arriving between.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Very well.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you, Chairman. If I can ask Erica Parrish or Michael to come up, please? No. Michael's back there. Hey there.
Hi, Erica, thank you. Can you speak a little bit about the entrance and the speed humps on Brookstone Drive?
Yes, ma'am. So the entrance location and the speed hump location, what we would typically do is, while it's coming through plan review, if, we would have our traffic operations division review that. And if it needs to be relocated, we would ask the developers to ship that in concurrence with DOT's comments.
And since this came in just for site plan review because it was already zoned, was a traffic study done for this either Brookstone Drive or Brookstone Walk?
No, ma'am, we did not request that.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask Ms. Smith to come up, please?
Yes, Commissioner.
Hi. Would you be willing to conduct a traffic study along Brookstone Drive and Brookstone Walk as, as, as part of the stipulations? Essentially to, because I know you had agreed in your other stipulations that you read in, that we were going back and forth on yesterday.
Sure.
That you were looking to mitigate with potentially a left turn lane. The traffic study would help DOT determine if that left turn needed to be completed now, prior to, after the center opens.
I, I don't, I think that would be perfectly fine. Is that something that you would envision happening during the plans review process?
Yes.
That would be fine?
Okay. Thank you. So like Ms. Smith said, this was approved back in 1986 before any of us came here with a stipulation that it had to come back to the board for site plan approval. There is a traffic concern that Mr. Hints has raised and, as we heard, the applicant is willing to address. So I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve OB 64 with the following stipulations. As necessitated, as necessitated by this development, recommend Brookstone Drive and Brookstone Walk access be studied for a left, or actually, I'm sorry. Brookstone Drive access to be studied for a left turn lane. If the left turn lane is warranted, recommend the location and design to be determined during plan review subject to Cobb County DOT approval. during plan review, subject to Cobb County DOT approval. Sorry, we got, and then also we'd like to approve the site plan dated August 13th, 2020, the letter from Ellen W. Smith dated November 10th, 2020, the district commissioner to approve the final landscape plan and building elevation plan, maximum of 169 children. And then also just to repeat the stipulation that Ms. Smith read in earlier, recommend the applicant ensure that all parking and drop-off pickup queue be contained within the development parking lot and not extend onto the right-of-way. If parking or the site queue impacts the adjacent roadway and future operations, recommend the applicant be required to coordinate with Cobb DOT to create a mitigation plan. A mitigation plan can include, but is not limited to, the following: stagger times for any future classes, modified internal striping queue management, or turn lanes. So that is my motion.
Second, okay. And what was the staff's recommendation, John?
It would be to approve the request, Mr. Chairman, subject to the conditions Commissioner Gamble has read.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Burrell?
Will Brookstone have access to their detention?
I'm sorry?
Will Brookstone have access to their detention? Because that was one of the opposition's concerns of getting, getting to clean up their detention pond.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Burrell, I had forgotten that. Ms. Smith, can we? Yes, please, could you? Thank you.
So the yellow highlight on this plan is actually off-site. There is already access for the HOA where that yellow line starts in Brookstone Drive, and that's what they've been using to maintain the lake. We have no problem giving them and negotiating with them access, but there is a stream buffer there, so their ability to come on this property that Wellstar owns is limited by the stream buffer, which we can impact, we can't let them impact either. So we're happy to talk to them about it, no issues, and I've told Mr. Hints that and I've sent him this exact plan with that highlighting. But there's a manhole that's in Brookstone Drive, you can see kind of the little circle in the site plan. They have been turning, there's a little drive right there, not drive, but a cut, curb cut, and that's where they can pull trucks for lake access and maintenance. I don't know if that answered your question.
Sorry, just for clarification, that's not on?
That's not on my client's property. Correct. That's, I believe that's HOA property.
So that's their access net?
Correct.
And that's not, it's not a, correct.
We have no rights to it.
Okay, any other discussion? If any none, I'll call the question. All favor players in hand, passes five to zero. Okay, this is to OB 38.
Yes, sir, going back to OB 38, this other business item is to consider a site plan amendment for Jupiter Development Incorporated regarding rezoning applications, Z-79 and 2000, for property located at the southwest intersection of City View Drive and Six Flags Parkway, and landline 603 of the 18th District. By way of background, Mr. Chairman and Board, the subject property was rezoned to community retail commercial in 2000 for a convenience store at fuel sales that had no access to Six Flags Parkway. The access was amended for the same use in 2006 to allow one right-in, right-out curb cut on Six Flags Parkway. The applicant would like to amend the site plan to allow one right-in, right-out curb cut, which is northern access, and that has been removed since this has been written, and one right-in, right-out, straight-in access from I-20 off-ramp, which is the southern access. And also to reduce the major side setback adjacent to I-20 from 35 feet to one foot. The proposed building would have other commercial uses in it, just like it did in 2000, 2006. The applicant has submitted a letter which is attached for your review, and I believe he sent in a letter later this month. If approved, all previous conditions should remain in effect. And applicant is present, Mr. Chairman and Board, there are three people here virtually who are opposed, and of the three, they, all three wish to speak. And there's also one person here virtually in support of the application who would like to speak. So at this point, I would ask if there's anyone here in person opposing other business item number 38. That directory shows no one here. And the applicant is present, make a brief presentation.
Members of the Board of Commissioners, for the record, my name is Garvis Sims, and I represent the applicant Jupiter Development Incorporated regarding this application for another business approval. I have with me today our civil engineer and traffic engineer, Mr. Brian Russell with Continental Group. He'll be available to respond to any questions or address any concerns that you may have at the appropriate time. This is not an application for rezoning. We're not asking for a different use, we're not asking for a change of use, we're not asking to change the entitlements that were granted. Mr. Peterson's correct, this is a part of a property that was rezoned to its current CRC classification back in the year 2000. I won't say there wasn't development in this part of the world because there was with Six Flags acting as the, as sort of the catalyst and the halo effect that this happened since then. But this property, as you can see just by looking at the site plan, is challenged somewhat in terms of topo and configuration and its positioning vis-à-vis the interstate, I-20. Back in 2000 when it was rezoned, there was no access allowed onto Six Flags Parkway. When the developers came back ready to develop the property, and in 2006 they asked for and received access onto Six Flags Parkway. In fact, the original plan, we showed two points of ingress and egress, restricted turning movements, but nevertheless, we've reduced and, or eliminated the northernmost one, and as you can see, have the southernmost point of ingress and egress, which is, which is right out, there's no left turning, turning movements on that, on that side. Lots happened since we filed this application, it was filed back in June, so obviously what it's boiled down to are considerations really regarding transportation, traffic, traffic issues. My client has refined the request. If you look at the, the architecture that has been submitted, it's cutting-edge, very, very nice architecture, and if you looked at it in relation to what's on the corridor and has been there for several decades or a couple of decades, then you see this is a vast improvement over the way that these types of stores typically, typically look. 6,200 square feet, it's two stories, everything you see on the site plan takes advantage of everything that's in front of it. In other words, it's oriented towards City View, and back in the day when this was rezoned in 2000 and then obeyed in 2006, City View was actually known as Six Flags Drive. So that's changed as well. As I mentioned, this zoning, or as Mr. Peterson mentioned, this zoning is not asking for any different uses other than in 2000, they showed a hotel on, if you look on the left or the western side of the property. So that, that's not a part of what we're asking for. I think that's problematic in terms of the topo, but you can see we do have a portion of our points of ingress and egress that extend or traverse a portion of that, of that property. We did submit a stipulation letter in July, on July 7th of 2020, which seems like eons ago. Nothing's changed in terms of what we'll agree to, except with respect to DOT and because Cobb DOT's stipulations and conditions have morphed, have evolved, as have ours. We've done two traffic studies, we've done an additional traffic memo in review of the traffic study that was submitted by the attorney who represents the BP station, which is east across Six Flags Drive from this. But I do want to touch on a couple of things in the stipulation letter. Anytime you have any type of business, whether it's a bank or inline retail or a C-store near an interstate, you want to be certain that you've got, you've got security. So we've got stipulations that talk about maximally lighting the site, not to the extent that illumination extends from the parameters of the property, but such that we can utilize the maximum lumens to cast downward. We'll have a security lighting on the buildings, we'll be submitting a photometric plan, and there'll be video surveillance at strategically positioned locations. That doesn't mean anything until you know that it's video surveillance that is monitored video surveillance, not just for purposes of maybe looking back every, every once in a while, be constant video surveillance with a multifaceted board in the, in the store that at any time can show all angles of the property and for obvious reasons. What I'd like to do is walk you through, if I can get a pointer from Cornelius and the microphone, just kind of walk you through this site plan, because what you're seeing is the, is the latest revised site plan. Of course, you can, just to orient you, this is, this is City View here, City View Drive, this is Six Flags Parkway, this is the, the subject property here, well, actually the totality of this, but this is where the, the C-store, convenience store with gas sales, and of course here you see where the gas dispensers will be located, the parking here. Everything that you see is oriented towards and in front of City View. We originally had a point ingress and egress here, right-in, right-out. We've jettisoned that in accordance with Cobb DOT. We still show this as a right-in, right-out, but we also show a through lane here off the interstate that comes directly to the site in this fashion. The BP owner who is right here thinks that that, that's an unfair treatment in terms of that he doesn't have advantage of that, and has suggested that GDOT want to approve that throughway positioning there. And also, this BP owner does not want us to have the, the right-in, right-out there, so totally eliminating that. Of course, with respect to our other points of ingress and egress, you can see restricted turning movements, right-in, right-out here, which take advantage of the median break here, we have full turning movements, and of course, the median that you see, and all of this comports with Cobb DOT's recommendations. The only thing that doesn't comport with Cobb DOT is last month in the, in the revised stipulations or conditions of DOT, they wanted this removed here, and that's based on their conversations with BP and potentially the, the GDOT as well. What we're going to suggest to you, and not just suggest, but as a, as a condition of the zoning, that all traffic and transportation issues regarding turning movements, points of ingress and egress and access, and exterior and interior maneuverability and accessibility all be subject to the Georgia Department of Transportation. We are within their purview. So if it's not approved by GDOT, then it simply won't be, simply won't be built. That, at one time, we thought addressed the, the conditions of the VP station, but I think that it, or maybe its owner is concerned about a competitive edge that a store 20 years its younger may have in terms of the available demographics in this, in this area, and wants to restrict our points of ingress and egress, which if that ends up what is happening, we have no access, either the through lane from the interstate or the right-in, right-out on the southernmost point of ingress and egress, then, then so be it. The entirety of the site will be, will be accessed from, from City View. Your staff's recommended approval. Again, this isn't a rezoning, this was, it's not as old as Ms. Smith's zoning from 1986, but it's 2000 and 2006, so what has been approved there does embrace and follow the board's policy at that time and at this time. There was some question as to, as to why we proceeded in other business fashion instead of an application for rezoning, as simply following the lead from 2000 to 2006. Nothing really has changed, resonating out of the same application, the same entitlements, the same approvals that, that happened 14 years ago. So at the appropriate time, Mr. Russell is here to respond to any questions that you have. If we, if we have opposition, then I think we can address and resolve anything that they may, may bring up. But we do respectfully request that you follow your staff's recommendation and that you reaffirm the policy that the board established in 2006, all subject to GDOT review and approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. All right, those in opposition?
We have four virtually opposed.
Okay.
The first one is Mark Akampora.
Hello, this is Mark Akampora. Am I being heard?
Yes, good, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. I was not prepared to make a presentation at this point. I am the traffic engineer for the opposition, so I believe the, there are other folks that are going to make a presentation, including the attorney, Linda Donlevy, and they are going to announce, so I will announce that I am available and listening to the proceedings. If there are any technical traffic engineering questions that you would like the opposition side to answer, I'm available to answer those questions.
Okay, sir, thank you very much.
The next speaker in the queue is Salim Aziz. You are muted.
You are muted? Yes, thank you for allowing this opportunity to me. My name is Salim Aziz, and I'm a, I'm a present owner of the Six Flags Parkway BP across from the state of this applicant for Jupiter Development. I just want to bring in some historical events. In 2000, in 2000, they got the permission for hotel, motel, and a convenience store with specially restricted stipulation that there should be no exit or entry on the Six Flags Parkway, no, no driveway or no access. In 2006, somehow they got that approved. I do not even recall of receiving any notice or seeing any notification. Again, go back in 2014, the eminent domain authority came to my location and condemned my property and closed one of the access in the driveway out of a Six Flags Parkway from my property, and closed one driveway on the Lee Industrial. And they restricted my access, they even paid me for that. And now comes 2020, and I see the application even entered in for giving more access and allowing, trying to do the major modification for the right, and the right-in and right-out to this property. In my opinion, that will hurt my business and me, it will be counterproductive for the smooth traffic, which will lead to the traffic congestion, more accident, dangerous for the tourists and travelers walking, especially walking from the area where my store is located and from the area where the applicant's store is located, from there towards Six Flags Park, they're walking. In many instances, I have witnessed parents leaving children at mine, our property in the, in the morning, and then they will come in the evening to pick them up. In the meantime, children are on their own, they do foot crossing, they walk by foot and go cross and go to the Six Flags Parkway and come back in the night, which will be very dangerous. So I'm extremely opposed to this proposal, and that's all from me, and I'll ask Shams Aziz, my son, to follow up on my presentation.
Okay, sir, thank you very much.
The next speaker would be Shams Aziz. You are unmuted.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I just want to do a piggyback on my father's presentation a little bit. You know, just a little bit of background about who we are. We're a small local business. You know, as previously stated, my father bought the property close to about 25 years ago, which at the time was quite the bold move. His colleagues, other business people and the like had kind of advised against it. They didn't really have a whole lot of faith in the area. I'm sure, you know, you all have some kind of recollection of the area. The site used to have a reputation kind of like murder Kroger over on Potts. There were rumors of a murder at the site. It was kind of difficult trimming up business, but you know, to give credit where credit's due, my father put in his blood, his sweat, his tears. He bought local, hired local, into a small business, and he turned it around. And just to kind of piggyback on what my dad was saying, we originally did have four access points. We had two on Six Flags Parkway, two on Lee Industrial Boulevard, and then in 2014, through added improvement in traffic safety, we had, Cobb DOT had condemned one of our driveways, one of our access points on Six Flags Parkway, and they turned the other one on Lee Industrial Boulevard into an enter-only driveway. So, effectively, we lost about a driveway and a half. You know, we weren't ecstatic at the time, but it was in the name of public safety. Our customers, our community were safer for it. And honestly, at the end of the day, we're a service-oriented business, and that's something that we're always going to get behind. I also mentioned that Cobb DOT transformed that intersection that we sit on, on Six Flags Parkway and Lee Industrial Boulevard, into one of the traffic lights and crosswalks before it was a four-way stop sign intersection. Again, I commend them for the improvement, and you know, we're all safer for it. You know, again, bringing us to today, that curb allowance on Six Flags Parkway, I understand it was approved about 14 years ago, but the situation has changed. Our curb was cut, or sorry, condemned for traffic reasons, and yet, you know, that curb hasn't been revisited. On top of that, drilling from the X off ramp leading into the development is just very inconsistent with the treatment that we've received. And you know, in the spirit of Cobb DOT's previous road improvements to improve traffic and public safety, it feels like a step backwards. You know, I think it'll cause more traffic issues, accidents, the traffic public, our customers and the surrounding community, they'll be the ones to feel, you know, most of the brunt of it. And again, just kind of echoing on what my father said, when summertime comes and it's a non-COVID year, that area gets very busy. You know, again, our station's a very quick five-minute walk away. Every summer, local traffic and the accidents, you know, they spike. In addition, there's a lot of foot traffic. You know, again, people will park in buildings adjacent to our store, they'll walk over the Six Flags, and you know, traffic is, traffic's already an issue, you know, with that foot traffic. And if we kind of have another ingress and another through lane, that foot traffic gets all the more dangerous, especially with children that, you know, again, are being dropped off and, you know, having to find their own way to the station, or to the park, excuse me. So, with these thoughts in mind, I'd like to turn it over to our attorney, Linda.
Okay, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Our next virtual speaker is Linda Dunleavy. Linda, you are unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, my name is Linda Dunleavy. I represent the owner of the BP on the Six Flags Parkway at 124 Six Flags Parkway. I followed Garvis's pointer presentation, and I think he may have pointed to the wrong site, so I just wanted to make sure that you knew exactly where the BP is. It is on the northeast corner of Lee Industrial Boulevard and City View Drive. I think perhaps Garvis inadvertently pointed to the property below that. As you've heard from Salim and Shams Aziz, we have a number of concerns and objections to the site plan being proposed. We outlined those in detail in a letter of November 13th to Commissioner Cupid and to all of you. The 2006 site plan to which Garvis referred provided for one curb cut, right in, right out at the southeastern corner of the property. The current plan calls for installation of a D cell lane for right in as you go southbound on Six Flags Parkway. It provides for a right out, but more importantly, it provides for a through movement from the westbound ramp off of I-20 into the property. This movement, or this new through lane, will effectively allow a left turn from Six Flags Parkway. So, effectively, they're asking for a full movement curb cut, which is considerably different from what was approved in 2006. My client has no objections to the use, to the design of the store, to the stipulations that are not related to access on the Parkway or the access points on City View, but we object purely on the grounds of the traffic hazards created by this allowance of the access point on the southernmost part of Six Flags Parkway. It has significant, it will have significant impact on the traveling public, some of whom include the customers of the BP. We're happy to see the elimination of the north access point. That was a wise move. The applicant has agreed to this, recognizing the safety issues that such a northern access would provide. However, the south access point also needs to be eliminated for similar reasons. The revised plan eliminates one of the current dedicated left turn lanes on the I-20 off ramp to provide for direct through access to the applicant's property. This reconfiguration will cause backup of traffic going to Six Flags when it gets ramped up again, and it will get ramped up again. Cars attempting to make a left turn to Six Flags will back up. This will cause site distance problems. These site distance problems are even noted by the applicant's own engineer, who says that those in the left lane will have their sight north on Six Flags partially obscured if there's another car in the through lane trying to get to the applicant's property. This will undoubtedly increase the chances of crashes at an already high crash intersection. There will be no light controlling this traffic at the through lane. It doesn't meet the requirements for the signal warrant. So, the configuration of the through lane and the southern access will increase crash potential, reduce site visibility for those making a left turn onto Six Flags Parkway, and will effectively allow cars going northbound on Six Flags to attempt a left into the site.
Ms. Dunleavy, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So, John, that's the recommendation of the staff.
Mr. Chairman of Board, the staff would recommend the board commissioners approve the request, subject to the November 10th, 2020 letter from Garvis Sams, subject to the site plan that was received November 10th, 2020, for the site layout only, with the district commissioner approving minor changes. Access to remain the same as it was approved in 2000, 2006, unless other access is approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation. District Commissioner to approve the eight-foot landscape buffer along City View Drive. District Commissioner to approve the final building elevations. And all previous stipulations not in conflict to remain in effect.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cupid.
Thank you, Chairman. This case has been continued since June or July based off of a number of concerns expressed by adjacent property owners, residential and commercial alike. The map before you does not reflect the volume and the challenges of traffic that convene here at this intersection. In fact, when the BP was here, I believe there was just a flashing red light that used to guide traffic, and now, you know, it has a full traffic light to help to meter traffic in this area, which, you know, has helped a lot, but also there have been additional traffic challenges with the growth in the area. The concerns that I received primarily from residential property owners had to do with the site being used as a gas station, and they were completely opposed to adding this use because of the volume of crime that is still associated with gas stations in the area. And we are not in a position with this other business application to deny this being developed as a gas station because that use was granted prior. However, I would like to add a stipulation for the county clerk for there to be a security plan submitted with this application upon its being granted that is to be reviewed by Cobb County Police and approved by the district commissioner. The former zoning did not stipulate the building and landscaping of the site, and I know that was incorporated in the applicant's letter, but in communicating with residents during our monthly community zoning hearings, we would like to also add that a landscape and architectural control committee consisting of the applicant, a member of community development, and residents along City View and Six Flags Parkway are to review, are to review the final landscape and building architecture, including fencing, with the district commissioner to have final approval. Also, back to the security plan, I just want to specifically add that there is, that there is no loitering permitted on the property. Getting to the most significant issue which was addressed here today pertains to transportation, but before I even go to that, let me get to just the competitive nature of the site that I do want to commend the opposition and particularly the owner of the BP for considering investing in this area and particularly for the improvements that have been made over time. While there still are opportunities for continuing improvements, I know that from at least the time that I've been in this area, I've seen some additional improvements with the building architecture, with it being painted, with there being additional lighting, with some improved landscaping, and appreciate you continuing to make those investments in, again, what you have acknowledged to be an area that is challenged. And part of that challenge has to do with the larger issue we'll talk about today with this transportation. With there being immediate access from the interstate and then also access further west to the interstate off of Six Flags Drive, this is an area that has a higher element of crime, a characteristic to any other area of the county. There is also a lot of activity that does creep into this area due to Six Flags being close by, and there is a lot of foot traffic of youth, of residents. In fact, this property, the subject property for zoning, I don't necessarily believe it was permitted, but it may be, may have been facilitated by the zoning code, but people would sometimes park there to walk to Six Flags Park. And so, not only did you have the vehicular issues, but you had the conflation of pedestrians walking up and down Six Flags Parkway causing challenges. With that, there are real visibility concerns coming out of the BP and challenges once you get south of Six Flags Parkway before you get to I-20 ramp with vehicles turning in and out of the gas station, also vehicles coming off of the interstate. And the traffic concerns were what were noted by the transportation study of the applicant, but also of the opposition and of our own Department of Transportation. I've spoken with Amy Diaz multiple times regarding this. I don't see her here today. I don't, Eric, I don't know if you're going to speak on her behalf today. If you don't mind approaching, I just want to talk to you. In fact, I'll hand this to you. There was a list of about nine recommendations Cobb DOT made, and I see seven recommendations on actual staff comments, and I don't know which ones have been left off of that list. If you can help me understand it, and have some time to review that.
Okay. Want me to just walk through these?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, the first one is just in relation to meeting the Cobb County Development standards through plan review, so that'll be taken care of.
Okay, and that may have been just taken implicitly, you know, without being stated here, and that counts as one.
Yes, ma'am. The second one is recommending a traffic study. Study assumptions have been submitted in the memorandum and reviewed by DOT.
Okay.
One of the questions or statements is study assumptions will need to be modified to account for the existing disruption to traffic volumes caused by COVID-19, which they have done.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is, is that the third stipulation there?
No, that was part of the second one.
Okay, part of the second one, okay.
Recommend removal of the northern access point on Six Flags Parkway due to its proximity to the adjacent signal at City View, which they've done.
Yes.
The fourth one is, as necessitated by the development, recommend that southern access on Six Flags Parkway include a deceleration lane and left turn lane. Recommend location and design to be determined during the plan review process, subject to Cobb County DOT approval.
Okay.
So, we have the D cell lane. There's not a designated left turn lane there, but part of that would be in relation to any of the submittals and coordination done with Georgia Department of Transportation and their requirements.
I plan on keeping all Cobb DOT recommendations as they are, and if something changes, we'll read that as it comes, but that is reflected both on the staff comments for the other business item as well as that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Recommend a raised median construction on top of the solid double yellow and yellow hatching in front of the proposed right in, right out along City View Drive, which I believe they've done.
Okay, that's not listed here. Okay, can you, can you state that again, please?
It's recommend a raised median constructed on top of solid double yellow and yellow hatching in front of the proposed right in, right out driveway along City View Drive to prevent the left turn lanes in and out of the driveway, which they have relocated that drive further west.
So, is that no longer relevant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's why that's off, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Recommend curb gutter and sidewalks along the southern property frontage on City View Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
Which it shows that they're installing that. Recommend replacing any disturbed curb gutter sidewalks along the western property frontage on Six Flags Parkway, which will make sure is taken care of during the plan review process.
Okay.
And then recommend a signal warrant study be completed for the proposed access alignment on the I-20, which as far as I understand, they've done.
Okay.
And as part of that, recommend coordination with the Georgia DOT District 7 and the Cobb County DOT while performing these studies. So, we've been in contact with them on that. Along, I believe they've had some discussions with Georgia DOT, but as part of the development review process, we would make sure that all correspondence and submittals are submitted to Georgia DOT.
Okay.
Along with that, because of the proximity to the ramp, they will have coordination with federal highway, and there may be an interchange modification ramp study that needs to be completed, but that would come through Georgia DOT if that requirement is needed there.
Right.
And then the last comment is recommend GDOT permits for all work and encroachments on the state DOT roadway.
Okay, that's not in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
John, can you help me get that back?
Oh, I'm sorry. I can bring it back to you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do is to incorporate these comments, some of them which are already implied, in that, and these are DOT comments that were dated July 17th, 2020, and some of them have been incorporated already in the applicant's letter, but I, the one thing that's not in here is just, you know, to recommend coordination with GDOT. It's a given, it's implied, but I just want that to be emphasized because of the impact of the exit ramp on the activity that will take place here. And I'll hand this to you. So, my motion to today will be to approve this, subject to the stipulations I already provided with respect to the landscape and actual control committee, with respect to a building security plan and no loitering, but also subject to staff comments and recommendations with the DOT comments reflecting that July 17th, 2020 correspondence. All other staff comments and recommendations are to be incorporated that are not otherwise in conflict.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you have a second? Okay, if you have a second, I'll second it. Oh, you're second, Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you.
I just have a few comments.
Okay.
Just real quick. Commissioner Cupid, I don't know if this was the case when we first met, but timing-wise, it seems like it probably was back in '06, because I remember you coming in and speaking, and this all looks very familiar. But I just, I can't support it because of the access off the interstate, just looking at it. And I know that the GIS maps are not always exactly correct, but it just, that whole thing, I just, I think that's problematic.
Certainly, and we know that Cobb DOT has been astute on top of all the changes as well as, you know, I know that GDOT will be, and there are a number of conditions to address that. In fact, we were here for the hotel behind it, yes, that had the issue. Yeah, but yes, that was one of the first times I came before the board to speak as a resident. But there are some additional stipulations, again, that pertain to the appearance of this property, that pertain to the security of this property that were not a part of the prior zoning, that this other business items gives that community a chance to be able to address. And so I'm inclined to support this with the, with those being added, but also due to the additional protections that DOT is going to apply to this property. And again, the opposition, their transportation concerns are reflected in that, and I know Cobb DOT has been on top of assuring that this, should their recommendations move forward, that it will comply with not only their recommendations and what they anticipate GDOT will consider upon their review. So thank you, though. I certainly respect you having those concerns.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? And it passes three to two of Commissioner's odd and gambling opposition.
Thank you.
And given the full, the nature of the full discussions on these OBs, I'm going to call a recess until 1:00 for OBs. Still, we do hear OBs 65 and 69.
You only have two minutes.
Nope, we have 65 and 69.
Yeah, two left.
Yeah, so I'm going to call a recess till 1:00.
Mr. Chairman, Board, next case on the agenda is other business item number 65 of 2020, which is to consider a reduction of minimum public road frontage for Jonas Martinez from 75 feet to 50 feet for track one and from 75 feet to zero feet for track two. The property is located on the north side of South Gordon Road, west of Pixcal Road, in landlot 304, the 18th district.
By way of background, the subject, the Board of Commissioners considers all reductions to minimum public road frontage pursuant to a code amendment to section 134-271-7A, adopted by the Board of Commissioners on February 27, 2018. Subject property is required to have 75 feet of public road frontage per lot. Proposed track number one has 50 feet of road frontage and proposed track number two has zero feet of road frontage. Both tracks are large acres tracks that both have over, both have over one acre in size and both properties are both zoned R20. The property currently has two houses on one lot and approval, approval of the variance would allow the property to have, be subdivided so to be one house per lot. Access will be from South Gordon Road via the existing asphalt gravel driveway, which has been in use for many years. If approved, all other zoning criteria for the tracks would be met such as setbacks, size, impervious surface, et cetera. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? Other business item number 65. Two. Let the record show there's two people here opposed. Would the applicant in opposition please come forward to be sworn in?
I'm speaking about the property at 1216 South Gordon Road and like you said, we're applying to have both houses have access to that driveway. I sent out all of the letters to all of the community and most of, almost 90% of the calls that I got back had us confused with another property that's doing a lot of construction in the area. So I just want to make sure that if there are people that it is going against me that it is the 1216 South Gordon Road. We have 4.2 acres of property. The two houses that are on the property have been on the property since the 50s. The smaller house on the property, which is, I guess, I don't know if you're looking at it on the left-hand side of the property, was the first one built in 1948 and then in 1955, the second house was built. So neither one of these houses are new construction at all. They've been there for, I guess you can call it 50, 60 years. Originally, I tried to do the zoning for the back. There's another road behind the property that I tried to get access to to split that way, but that road has been overgrown and the DOT didn't approve that method. So this was the easiest method to go forward with this because we only have 50, the, when the property comes down to South Gordon, it narrows down to just 50 feet. Yeah, it narrows down like that to just 50 feet. I don't know, I guess it's been like that for years. So that is exactly what the problem is. Do both, both houses, I don't know if that matters, but both houses have their own septic tanks, their own drain fields, and they both have been updated and checked on this year. A new drain field was added to the small house this year. If there was any opposition to this, I would definitely be willing to do whatever, if it was an opposition from one of the neighbors and they wanted a privacy fence installed, I'm totally willing to do that. I'm willing to do anything that it takes to get this to go forward because like I said, both houses have been there forever. I guess this wasn't originally updated from the original owner. I think we bought the property from the original owner and I guess he never took care of any of this stuff. There were residents, we were, we did have the residents renting this house and they had people, they had their mother-in-law, I think, living into the small house, but we've evicted both of the residents. We had some problems with the, the Cobb Code Commission came out and said that they were making a mess with the trash and there was another complaint. So I addressed both of those complaints to their satisfaction and the residents fell behind on the rent, so we were able to evict them. So right now, the property is empty. That's all that I
Mr. Chairman, Board, next case on the agenda is other business item number sixty-five of two thousand and twenty, which is to consider a reduction of minimum public road frontage for Jonas Martinez from seventy-five feet to fifty feet for track one and from seventy-five feet to zero feet for track two. The property is located on the north side of South Gordon Road, west of Pixcal Road, in landlot three oh four, the eighteenth district. By way of background, the subject, the Board of Commissioners considers all reductions to minimum public road frontage pursuant to a code amendment to section one thirty-four dash two seventy-one seven A, adopted by the Board of Commissioners on February twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen. Subject property is required to have seventy-five feet of public road frontage per lot. Proposed track number one has fifty feet of road frontage and proposed track number two has zero feet of road frontage. Both tracks are large acres tracks that both have over, both have over one acre in size and both properties are both zoned R twenty. The property currently has two houses on one lot and approval, approval of the variance would allow the property to have be subdivided so to be one house per lot. Access will be from South Gordon Road via the existing asphalt gravel driveway, which has been in use for many years. If approved, all other zoning criteria for the tracks would be met such as setbacks, size, impervious surface, et cetera. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number sixty-five? Two? Let the record show there's two people here opposed. Would the applicant in opposition please come forward to be sworn in?
Thank you. I'm speaking about the property at twelve sixteen South Gordon Road and like you said, we're applying to have both houses have access to that driveway. I sent out all of the letters to all of the, the community and most of, almost ninety percent of the calls that I got back had us confused with another property that's doing a lot of construction in the area. So I just want to make sure that if there are people that it is going against me, that it is the twelve sixteen South Gordon Road. We have four point two acres of property. The two houses that are on the property have been on the property since the fifties. The smaller house on the property, which is, I guess, I don't know if you're looking at on the left-hand side of the property, was the first one built in nineteen forty-eight and then in nineteen fifty-five, the second house was built. So neither one of these houses are new construction at all. They've been there for, I guess you can call it fifty, sixty years. Originally, I tried to do the zoning for the back. There's another road behind the property that I tried to get access to to split that way, but the, that road has been overgrown and the, and the DOT didn't approve that method. So this was the easiest method to go forward with this because we only have fifty, the, when the property comes down to South Gordon, it narrows down to just fifty feet. Yeah, it narrows down like that to just fifty feet. And I don't know, I guess it's been like that for years. So that is exactly what the problem is. Let me think. The, both, both houses, I don't know if, if that matters, but both houses have their own septic tanks, their own drain fields, and they both have been updated and checked on this year. A new drain field was added to the small house this year. If there was any opposition to this, I would definitely be willing to do whatever, if it was an opposition from one of the neighbors and they wanted a privacy fence installed, I'm totally willing to do that. I'm, I'm willing to do anything that it takes to get this to go forward because like I said, both houses have been there forever. I guess this wasn't originally updated from the original owner. I think we bought the property from the original owner and I guess he never took care of any of this stuff. There were residents, we were, we did have the residents renting this house and they had people, they had their mother-in-law, I think, living into the small house, but we've evicted both of the residents. We had some problems with the, the Cobb Code Commission came out and said that they were making a mess with the trash and there was another complaint. So I addressed both of those complaints to their satisfaction and the residents fell behind on the rent. So we were able to evict them. So right now, the property is empty. That's all that I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the person in opposition?
Good morning. My name is Chandler Taylor. I'm the resident just west of twelve sixteen South Gordon Road. That, to address a couple of things that he said, the previous owner, Milton Bellamy, his house was, as I understand it, built in the nineteen fifties, early nineteen fifties. The second structure that he's referring to, the smaller house, was an outbuilding that Milton constructed in the nineteen eighties. At least that's what he told me prior to him selling the, the property. Just wanted to clarify that. So in September of two thousand and nineteen, AJ Investment Group owned by Jonas Martinez purchased that property. They told our neighbor at twelve seventy-five South Gordon Road that Mr. Martinez intended to build potentially a trailer park or multiple affordable housing units on the property. So that was alarming to us. An outbuilding, the one that we mentioned that was built, I believe, in the early nineteen eighties, on the western side of the property closest to us, which is actually pretty close to our residence, was renovated and within a few months was occupied. So if you fast forward to April of two thousand and twenty, that's when code enforcement becomes involved, as he mentioned, and I would like to read through the code enforcement report because I think it, it presents an accurate depiction of Mr. Martinez's property management style. So on April seventh, some of this is kind of in broken run-on sentences. It's just comments from the code, code enforcement officer that came out, but I'll do my best with it. Complaint is family living and outbuilding tax records show one thousand one hundred eighteen residential square foot allowing two unrelated adults, including up to one unrelated adult and two vehicles to be regularly parked to the residence of the total number of vehicles allowed. Only two may be parked outside of a garage or carport. Due to complaint, notice of violation for single-family dwelling was generated and will be sent to owner. So on four seven, initial investigation found to be in violation. On four twenty-one, more notes are updated. They say, observed Mrs. Crystal and a male sitting on porch at twelve sixteen Unit B, South Gordon Road. The male entered the home as I approached. Ms. Crystal advised she has been the tenant of the building for about one month. I also observed an appliance, litter, clothing, and other miscellaneous items on and about the property. There were two vehicles parked in the rear of the yard and the grass underneath a car overhang and a trailer with stored items parked in the grass on the right side of the front yard. Notice of violations for outside storage, litter, and parking standards was generated and will be mailed. I gave Ms. Crystal my business card for the owner to contact me or Officer Mars. Building B is not currently in the tax records. The building has an electrical meter connected and, and is on. I will research its existence and zoning. Ms. Crystal advised she was told someone from the building inspection is due to come out this week. I'm not sure if this is valid due to COVID nineteen. Four twenty-one, reinspection, status, in violation, use limitations for outside storage, litter, parking standards. On four thirty, there was a phone call. The notes read, spoke with owner, Mr. Martinez. I advise since nineteen fifty-two, the property tax record shows a single-family dwelling, meaning it can only have one primary residence. I did not see records indicating otherwise. He contacted the zoning division and was advised for compliance. He needs to have a survey completed separating the property into two lots. He stated he will give a survey company, he will call a survey company and have this scheduled as soon as possible. He will keep, be informed with the progress. I will extend the case, waiting to hear the outcome. On six ten, received correspondence from Mr. Martinez advising progress toward case. Seven one, still no paperwork has been turned in. August tenth, I just spoke to Mr. Martinez about property and secondary home. He said they are working on zoning, with zoning department about getting a variance. I asked Mr. Martinez if Building B, about Building B, if he has spoke to health department about septic tank. He said they will look into that as well as they have other violations still present here to a sofa in the front yard and trash and litter on the ground. I told Mr. Martinez the property needs cleaned up right away and will leave citation due on door. Status in violation. Eight eighteen, case details, comments. No change to property. Vehicle parked on grass and they are dumping their household trash in wood line. Appliances have been thrown in backyard, paper and trash all over the property. Both buildings appear to be used as rental properties on the same lot. Mr. Martinez has not called me back. I checked with zoning and no one has applied for a variance for property citations are, are needed. I left citation due on door, I'm guessing. As I was sitting here writing notes to case, someone took notice of me and did not see who. There are two vehicles here. As I was driving away, the residents at building came out of home and stopped me. They asked me to explain the violations. I did. Then the owner called on their phone to talk with me. He requested, requested we meet to go over the violations we made on date eight nineteen, two thousand and twenty. So on eight nineteen, met with Mr. Owner, Mr. Martinez, Officers Mars and Clark to discuss SFD and to issue citations for outside storage, litter, and parking standards. Observed several vehicles with expired tags and non, and non-occupable as well as a gutter hanging on the left side of the house. Notice for non-compliance, vehicle and gutters and shutters written and was handed to owner, Mr. Martinez. So then on eight nineteen, non-compliance. Eight twenty-seven, received email from Mr. Ripman advising some cleanups in progress and then intend to, the last one is received email from Mr. Ripman advising turned in all paperwork, drawings, and houses for the survey. So that leads me to the survey. If you look at it, I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to, there's some red flags. First and foremost, the first thing you would see is that this, the acreage is listed as one, one hundred thousand eighty-eight, six hundred and thirty-eight acres with four point three three square feet. Seems pretty simple, like they just got the two reversed. Cobb County listed this parcel as four point two acres. So again, another discrepancy in terms of four point three versus four point two. Because of all of this, I contracted Donald Perryman's company to come out and do a survey on our property and he's the Cobb County Surveyor. And when showing that person, the surveyor, this, he said the first thing that stood out to him as a red flag was that the point of beginning is a self-set pen, which, you know, I'm not a surveyor, but he says in, in terms of surveying, that's, that's a big no-no. You don't do that. It says that their survey, unless stated otherwise hereon, was prepared without benefit of an abstract of title. No liability is assumed by the undersigned for loss relating to any matter that might be discovered by an abstract title search of this property. So it looks like it was done without the benefit of a title. And if you look at the three westward lots from twelve sixteen, they're all approximately four point two acres. But if you look closely at twelve sixteen, on the southern part of the property, twelve twelve South Gordon Road, is owned by somebody else. The owner's listed as Alice Height and it's listed at one point two, zero two acres, which just looking at it geometrically, I don't see how that lot can be equivalent to the other three rectangular lots westward of it. It looks to me like it's closer to three acres and not four point two or even four point three as listed on the survey. So at face value, OB sixty-five asks that one R twenty parcel be split into two, one of which would have fifty feet of road frontage and the other parcel would have zero road frontage. With a little imagination, one can see the possibilities a granted variance of zero feet would present to an investment group and developer. Thus far, I feel like Mr. Martinez's management style has not been consistent with one that anybody would want as, as their neighbor. So my oppositional request would be a denial predicated on the established recklessness of Mr. Martinez and what he intends to do with the property. If you find that that's not acceptable, a continuance be granted until the, the survey of our property is completed so that we can establish reliable boundaries to make sure that all offsets are met. A probationary period would also be recommended by me and the opposition to establish, you know, compliance with code enforcement. I don't think that's unreasonable given the, the history here. Lastly, I think stipulations, if you were to grant such a variance, I would hope that it would not be fifty feet of road frontage and zero, which could allow for as many houses as one could jam into a small parcel as long as they met offset requirements. And also potentially no more subdivisions of the plot would be nice, given what we've gone through with it. And my closing comment is that-
Sir, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And John, what are the recommendations of the staff?
Mr. Chairman and Board, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to Cobb DOT comments, fire comments, and site plan contained in the other business packet for property line configuration and access.
Okay. Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you to the resident who spoke here today and certainly did a lot to prepare and understand the request adjacent to his property. I too have questions about the survey provided in this other business item and the map that I'm seeing here, even the position of the home. The survey is different than what I have in my packet. That's, I mean, this home looks like it's been built on two different parcels. And that's not, excuse me, that is not what is reflected in what I have preparing for this other business item. I, I don't even perceive how this moves forward with what I have in front of me. So I do want to honor what has been suggested by the, the resident, which is to continue this for thirty days. I really need to talk to staff about their recommendation and about the differences that I have. This is, this seems like a, a different scenario than what I discussed in preparation for this. I have some questions that need to be answered beyond this forum.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue in a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a few comments. I mean, Commissioner Cupid, this one to me has red flags all over it. I mean, you know, I think some of the things you mentioned, it seems in looking at the GIS, Tim, could you put that back up, please? The GIS. The, the dialogue about the fact that it was an, an outbuilding or whatever seems to fit better. But the other thing, Tim, could you slide down so we could see that, the DOT area? Nope, other way, I'm sorry. Slide up. And I, I don't think Eric is still here, but I'm, I'm kind of curious why if there is, is that a private drive? Is that DOT, that corridor there where it says Elms Lane? You know, I think, John, that one of the things to answer some of Commissioner Cupid's concerns is we need to find out what is, is that county right-of-way? If it's county right-of-way, then what this person needs to be doing is accessing, if they want to split the property, they need to access it in a normal way. You know, to have a zero lot frontage, I, I've never really been in support of that. So I, I just, I agree with Commissioner, Commissioner Cupid that there are a ton of issues and red flags here on this that I'm not sure that we have the whole story.
I agree.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, actually, so if we would slide down, can we find out if there's already been a lot split on this? Because to me, just looking at the shapes of the lots in the area, this one lot, the eighteen dash three oh four, looks like it was already split off from the existing. Can we just see if that, verify if that had happened?
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All the favor, please raise your hand. That's a five to zero. Okay, OB sixty-nine.
Okay, and in the meantime, I would ask the applicant to get with the opposition on this case to kind of figure out what's going on with it. Okay? Last case on today's agenda is other business item number sixty-nine of two thousand and twenty, which is to consider a site plan stipulation amendment for Brock Built Homes regarding rezoning application Z forty of two thousand and eighteen, property located on the north side of Booth Road, the west side of Bell's Ferry Road, and the southeast release side of I five, I five seventy-five, and landlots two eighty-five and two eighty-four of the sixteenth district. By way of background, the subject property was rezoned residential senior living for a senior living community in two thousand and eighteen to the site plan with many stipulations. Since the property was rezoned two years ago, other developers have considered developing property but have not. This applicant is the third developer that I know of that's been trying to develop the property, but they need to amend the site plan and stipulations to accommodate their proposal. The three stipulations they need to amend are listed in a document titled Description of Other Business Request and mainly deal with signage, landscaping, fencing, and a berm along I five seventy-five. The applicant has been in communication with the Bell's Ferry Civic Association regarding this amendment and the revisions. If approved, all stipulations should, should remain in effect that are not in conflict with this amendment. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here in person opposed to other business item number sixty-nine? Two? Let the record show there's two people opposed. All those interested to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Almost said good evening, good afternoon. It's not evening yet. It feels like it, though.
You're last.
You can fix that.
Yeah, you're last.
All right.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Parks Huff with Sam's Larkin Huff and I represent Brock Built Homes in relation to this other business item to modify some previous zoning conditions related to this property. I, I know y'all were all on the board when this came forward before, so I'm not going to go over the property. You're very familiar with the location next to the interstate, Bell's Ferry. It's got roads on all sides and, and two other home builders looked at developing and building an RSL development on the project and, and Brock Built is seeking to do that now. Brock Built is a, a local company, a builder, wonderful product and proud to, that they're looking at this site. But their product and, and they're making some slight modifications in zoning conditions. This is an overall site plan showing the property. The condition changes relate to the fencing was very specific as to the previous zoning condition. The signage had some inconsistencies on how the signage was going to be handled. And then there was a, the buffer adjacent to the interstate, we're modifying that language there. Again, this is just detailing some of the project. It's got an amenity package when you come into the community. It's going to be, you know, an RSL detached community. The signage, what we propose is that the signage simply be a monument-style sign to match the, to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance. There was some language about the height that, that actually was inconsistent. So this is just example of the monument-type signage. The fencing, again, the fencing was very specific before. We propose this type of fencing with landscaping also that are mixed in, a board fencing with masonry columns. The buffer adjacent to the interstate, there's portions of it that are, are sloped down where actually our homes are going to be below grade. And so obviously that graphic there, which is on the site plan that was submitted with the application and is submitted with a stipulation letter dated November sixteenth, shows there'll be a cut slope with landscaping. And then where it's at grade or higher grade, it will be a six-foot berm. And that was one of the conditions that was changed after a dialogue with Bell's Ferry Civic Association. My letter, which just went out yesterday, incorporated their language in item number one to, to specify that the berm would be six feet in height. We didn't have that specificity before and with plantings on top of it. So we totally incorporated their language in that request. Wanted to just share with you some of the details of what they're, they're planning. Obviously, their programming, their amenity packages, they develop the full set of plans and, and coming up with that. But it will have a lot of outdoor amenities like bocce ball, outdoor gardens, things like that, pavilion, outdoor gathering area. We've added some additional architectural plans that were, to supplement the plans that had been previously approved. And so, and then we did have shown them the full engineered drawings that are going forward. And so, and then we did have shown them the full engineered drawings that are going forward, and you can see how the slopes handle, are dealt with, and why we need some adjustments on the buffering adjacent to the interstate and how we're handling that with a cut slope and a berm on the other portion of it. So we ask that you review the request and approve it, subject to my letter dated November 16th that incorporates the questions that we answered with Bell's Ferry Civic Association. So with that, I'm glad, I still have 10 minutes, but I assume that someone just forgot it, but I won't, I won't take it all.
Yeah, this is not your lucky day, Mr. Huff. But you do have time left on the clock, and if need be, we'll bring you back to use that time, okay? All right, those in opposition?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Voice, Commissioners. My name is Diane Shepherd. I'm speaking on behalf of the Bell's Ferry Civic Association. The densely forested 35-acre tract is one of the larger tracts in the Bell's Ferry Corridor that remains undeveloped, so we have a keen interest in the details of this property. We were in favor of this property being rezoned to RSL in 2018 under KC40 by Jim Chapman Communities. In 2018, we had Mr. Chapman speak at our annual BFCA meeting to show our neighbors his plans. We are here today to speak to you because two prior developers have decided against developing this property. We are uncertain as to why Jim Chapman Communities and Lanar Georgia Inc. decided not to develop this property into RSL. We do, what we do know is that stipulations from both Z40 2018 and OB70 2019, which was Lanar Homes, carry over and apply to the Brockbuilt Homes OB69 case before you today. The paper trail is complicated, and our civic group relies on the excellent work staff does in preparing their case comments. Staff comments for OB70 are extensive and should carry forward on OB69. We ask staff comments, which were just posted this morning, be amended to include the OB70 comments, and those are of particular importance to us because of the road. The developers prior to Brock agreed to a turn lane on Bell's Ferry, turning onto North Booth, and then Cobb DOT recommended an extension from the turn lanes so that we have a four-lane highway not merging down to one and then merging into a turn lane again. And so the Commissioner Burrell has all of those comments that she can answer if there's questions. We want, request that Cobb DOT review the plans because this is a new developer and the layout may not have the room for the right of way, depending on what the phases, the turn lane and the road extension are done. On Thursday, November 12th, Mr. Parks Huff, the attorney for Brockbuilt Homes, supplied us with valuable information that has not yet been posted to the county website for the OB69 case. We received a PDF copy of the engineering site plan, which can be successfully enlarged to read dimensions and fine print. I have to say, this is huge innovation. We usually have to ask the attorneys for prints that we can read, and so we very much appreciate that we can read a PDF file up to 800%. So we hope everybody who submits to you going forward will do the same. It will make your life so much easier. When we met in person with Brock, a Brockhome representative and their attorney on October 29th, all they had to present was a conceptual plan mainly concerned with landscaping changes, and that's basically what they showed you. So things behind the scene have progressed. Our civic group is always concerned that all the specifics be defined in writing in the stipulations ahead of time. When they are not specifically spelled out and are assumed or taken for granted, we know from past experience that unless explicit, stipulations can be overlooked, set aside, or ignored during development. These issues are important and affect the community as a whole, and should always be specifically spelled out so there's no question after the fact. For instance, we would like to ensure that the adequate right of way for the mandated turn lane and turn lane extension are provided on the developer's engineering site plan, and that may possibly involve them cutting back on their lot sizes. That's why we'd like the Cobb DOT to review that. Another major concern for us and our neighbors is sound mitigation. Over 35 acres of dense forest next to I-75 will be clear cut. We were notified late last night that Mr. Huff agreed to remove the TBD on the berm heights and put six feet of height in the stipulation, along with the plantings we requested. We appreciate this change as it will help with sound mitigation. There are no GDOT sound barrier walls because this land was undeveloped at the time GDOT did that. Sound will travel and impact many existing neighborhoods, so not only do we represent the Bell's Ferry Corridor, but we live in it. The rezoning to RSL was approved in 2018, but Brockbuilt Homes has submitted a new layout for lots and roads, that's interior roads, replaced walls with berms and plantings, and changed the stormwater drainage plan, which I believe now includes some underground storage as well as some above-ground storage. We pointed out to Mr. Huff that our ability to provide oversight ends when the VOC votes. We cannot provide any input at plan review. So Commissioners, we are placing the remaining oversight in your hands and with the county staff. We ask Mr. Huff to present today so Brockbuilt Homes' plans for the community proposed to build would become part of the public record and available on Cobb TV. When the property is clear cut, we will be inundated with questions, so we want to be able to provide a link to the Cobb TV presentation, as well as to provide a history of the complex zoning on this property as a way to reassure the public that zoning protocols have been properly followed. This process for OB69 has been unnecessarily difficult and last minute. It is still not complete for the county's requirements, placing an undue burden on the public. For instance, the neighbors who were within 1,000 feet did not have the opportunity we had to back and forth with the developer to get the engineering site plan, to negotiate about sound mitigation and berms, and so things just, I think because of the holiday, maybe we're a little bit more rushed, but it's just hard for everybody when things are last minute. That said, we would like to thank Commissioner Burrell for keeping her promise to our constituents, to her constituents and ours, that the development south of I-575 on Bell's Ferry Road remains residential and keeping with the existing neighborhoods. We also wish to thank Chairman Voice and Commissioner Ott for their public service. We know from experience, serving the public is not an easy job. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John, what are the staff comments?
Mr. Chairman and Board, the staff would recommend the board of commissioners approve the request, subject to the site plan contained in the other business packet with the district commissioner perming minor modifications to the document in the other business packet titled Description of Other Business Request, and all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment should remain in effect.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burrell?
Well, as you've heard, this is the third developer for RSL that has come in to develop this property. And prior to it being zoned RSL, it, there were several, or a few, I guess I should say, two or three, commercial developments that I met with that I did not support because we actually requested RSL at this location. And thank you, Diane, for your comments. I have always included Bell's Ferry Civic on any of the cases that have come, not just on this property, but throughout the corridor. And we work well together, and I value your input, and this, this is no exception. However, we have met with Brockbuilt and their attorney to, you know, go over all this, and if you look at the description of the other business application, there's three things that they're, that are before us today. The, the internal, the sound barriers, which is really an internal thing, the, the 150-foot turn lane, decel lane on the Booth Road is still in place. All the other stipulations, front, sidewalk frontage, everything else that was approved in the other two zonings, the previous owners, remain in effect. The only thing that is being changed is what you see in the applicant's description with the fence and the berm and the landscape plan. So I would like to, first of all, submit, the reason this latest stip letter that was, I think, emailed to all of us last, yesterday, late afternoon, and I in turn sent it to Bell's Ferry. One of the reasons this was late was because, not late, but because there was some clarification that needed to be made in talk, dialogue, back and forth with Bell's Ferry Civic on the berm and the landscape and the things that are in here for clarification. But also, in the last zoning or other business that was approved, there, there was confusion about the wall and the fence, one being a sound barrier because of the managed lanes project, and there is no sound barrier, which is a GDOT responsibility when those were put in. However, this property was not covered because it was vacant, not developed. But also, you know, the amenities package was not outlined on the site plan and all that. There also, in this November 16th letter, clarifying the berm and the fence and so, and the signage, there's also renderings of the, of the homes that are to be built. So I want to make sure that those are online and on, on the, in the minutes as well, the renderings. Okay. So with that, I'm ready to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to approve other business number 69, subject to letter dated November 16th with attachments from Mr. Parks Huff, impervious surface not to exceed 55%. The final site plan to be approved by District Commissioner with review by Bell's Ferry Civic. Final landscape plan to be approved by the County Arbors and the District Commissioner with review by Bell's Ferry Civic. And all other steps remain in effect, not otherwise in conflict.
Do we have a second? Any comments? Okay, Commissioner Cupid, you have something?
Yes, just one question. You had the sound addressed in another prior zoning, you stated.
The, the berm with the landscape buffer is what's replacing any fence or wall.
Okay, is that to address sound?
Yeah, anesthetic.
Off of, for the entrance onto the freeway?
Mm-hmm. Well, it could, I guess. My, I understand that, that the managed lanes project did not put sound barriers there, but that's a GDOT project, state project, not a county DOT. And the sound barrier would be to protect this, it doesn't impact any other neighbors, but it would protect, it would be to protect these homes. So the developer, you know, if he wants to invest in that to protect, to sell his homes, that's up to him, and I can't require it, or I'm not required that he build a wall or a sound barrier. I mean-
Yeah, Erica's still here? I guess Erica's gone. Michael Francis, are you able to help address a matter here? I see Erica's not here. Ma'am, I don't-
No.
Is that clarification?
No, just, I'm going to bring you back up in a second, okay?
Hi.
If you, you can look on the map here, there's a residential development, a senior development that's proposed for this parcel-
Okay.
-that is south of the entrance ramp to 575, where they have the express lanes. And, and presenting, Commissioner Burrell provided that the state DOT did not put in any sound barrier because there is, because this was an undeveloped parcel. However, there is going to be significant sound impact to the residents that live there. Outside of obligating the developer to do anything about sound attenuation, can this be brought to GDOT to add a sound barrier wall there since there will be residential development?
Yeah, once it's built out, the community can request the sound barriers to be put in, but it's a process they have to go through with GDOT because it's their right of way that the wall has to be built.
Okay. So would it be the HOA-
It'll be-
-that would have to request it, or the developer?
The HOA, the community.
And Commissioner Cupid? I, I've worked with Bell's Ferry Civic because the sound barriers that were put in and where they live, Chastain Lakes and other subdivisions that back up to the, were not, were not adequate. And so they have that issue, and I worked with them, went through Cobb DOT to GDOT to try to get them improved. And so they can request it through GDOT. I have no control over it, and you don't either, but, I mean, they, they can request it, but that's no guarantee that GDOT is going to come through. But it's, it's not, still not our responsibility, but-
I, I think we always have a, the strong consideration of health, safety, and welfare for any zoning that's before us. And not having sound being addressed by a property this close to an entrance ramp impacts the welfare of residents that would move there, and whether or not we want to claim responsibility for it or not, I can tell you, I have residents that con, used to continue to contact me over, it seems to be a senior development, but it's at least a residential development off of the east-west connector, which is not an entrance to the interstate by any means, and it, I can just hear the phones about people being impacted by sound there, and if you don't address it at this stage, nothing obligates anyone to do anything about it. I don't know if this is something that can Cobb DOT help with that request to have them look at, to have GDOT put in a, some type of sound attenuation wall there?
We would need to research it. I know that, like I said, it would have to go through directly from the HOA to GDOT as part of the request, but we can research it and find out if there's any other avenue that we could take from the county.
Especially when I think of seniors, I think that they, they probably, in a senior development, may have a particular interest in having some quiet enjoyment of their property. The homes look beautiful, the development looks beautiful. The homes look beautiful, the development looks beautiful, but I can't believe that sound would not be a significant issue there.
If I may, Mr. Parks, would you and your client be willing to work with Cobb DOT to get, to request something to see if they could come back and do that at this point?
Certainly, certainly. We'd be glad to work with Cobb DOT to get a request into GDOT. That's available. That is the whole purpose of the berm, I think.
Right.
Everything, landscape. Just to help address...
Thank you, Michael. So is it just trees that are there for the sound barrier, trees that will be put on a berm?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of things. One is, as you can see from the GIS, there's a stand of trees within the GDOT right-of-way that will also act as a barrier. Then you get to our property, and we'll have, you know, some of our property is actually going to be recessed down, which is the best sound barriers when you go below grade. That's a separation. And then the other part where we get up to grade, that's where, and Bells Ferry Civic Association said, you know, we said we're gonna do a berm, and they said, well, we want a little more detail about the height of the berm and that you're gonna put evergreens on top of the berm, and that was the reason why the letter dated yesterday incorporated their request to have a berm, specific height, and landscaping on top of it. And my client certainly is going to be investing millions and millions into this property, and it's in their interest that they sell homes, and so they believe that they've addressed the sound barrier for their purchasers.
I hear you. People don't know until after the fact, but...
No, I certainly understand your concern.
You and I have been at a zoning here, a zoning case that was considered for the board, and as we were in that residential subdivision...
Yep.
...in these beautiful homes, we just kept hearing traffic...
And trucks and cars and sirens, and I hear you. All right.
Okay, thank you. Diane, would you come back up, please? I'll let you...
Right, I think we might have given you the wrong impression. I told Mr. Huff's ahead of time, we were gonna raise our hand in opposition so we could speak about all of our public oversight and get it on the record. To address the sound, we do feel that the cut, the below-grade, the trees along that belong to GDOT are better sound barriers. Commissioner Burl hosted a meeting a couple of years ago with GDOT, Ann Bells Ferry was invited, and the representative from GDOT said, really, when you have good stands of trees, it's a better sound barrier than if you cut them down and you put up one of the sound walls. So we're not asking for sound walls. We're finally, you know, with last-minute negotiations because we felt the berm height shouldn't be TBD, that it needed to be at least six feet high, and it needed to have evergreens on it because trees do provide sound buffering. Now, they're not gonna replace 35 acres of very dense forest, so we know that the sound is gonna carry not just to these people that aren't gonna be our new neighbors, but to all the neighborhoods surrounding. And we do recognize there's not a whole lot we can do about it because I talked to the county arborist, and we know that Brockbuilt Homes is gonna need to clear cut that entire property. There aren't even any old trees worth saving. They're just too old and not in good condition. So it's gonna be clear cut. So what our conditions were is we just wanted enough public oversight so that we got the berms, which we think are more effective than, say, an eight-foot-high wall, because plantings will grow taller, it might take some time, and we do know it's gonna impact our Bells Ferry corridor neighbors, and we're gonna hear about it. So we're trying to make sure we have all our ducks in a row, and we know that turn lane is gonna be hugely important to them. We want to make sure that the landscape plan and the size of the lots allows for the proper right-of-ways there. So it's mainly oversight that we're concerned with, small details that get in the record that get taken care of, and we really appreciate, you know, Commissioner Burl has invited us to her offices and had Mr. Huff and a representative from Brockbuilt Homes, but at the time, they didn't have all of these details worked out. And so that's why we're here, because details matter to us hugely in getting them in writing and in the stipulations. So we are in favor of the berms. We don't recommend that GDOT cut down those trees and put in a sound barrier because by GDOT's own admission, it'll be worse.
Okay. The reason I brought you up here is that you and I both know, over my time here in office, there have been times I've supported the Bells Ferry, there's been times when I haven't, I voted against it. That just goes to reflect the amount of respect I have for your group.
Thank you.
So what I heard from you today was that you received information late in the game...
Yes.
And my vote's gonna hinge on whether or not you think you need a little bit more time to make sure that you can properly address these latest additions that you received last night.
I think we have managed to work everything out ahead of time. It just, I think it takes up more of your time, more of staff's time, when things aren't submitted. There was a holiday on Wednesday, and so that put everybody behind, and so there were just circumstances that make this case particularly difficult at the last minute because it seems on its surface to just be about landscaping, but there's, when you dig into it, there's lots of carryover steps and details. So, no, I don't think we need a continuance. I know Commissioner Burl does not want a continuance, and I really thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask is that I've come to learn that once you pass a zone and it's almost impossible to reverse it.
Yes, we know that.
You can change the law, but you can't change the zoning.
Well, and that's why we feel that plan review is gonna be very important to make sure those right-of-ways for the donated lanes and extensions are properly allocated. And as I said, the engineering drawing, they didn't show it today much, but it's very good, and it includes the sidewalks and curb and gutters and streets to Cobb down requirements, and they are labeled as private roads, but if they do decide to designate them and turn them over to the county, they are to county standards. They may or may not put in a gate, and I'm sure, you know, Cobb DOT will see if they have the proper setbacks for their call box. It's just all of those little details that we rely on the county to follow through on, and the county is very good if things are in writing properly, so we are appreciative of your concerns.
Okay, and I know so you have a lot of confidence in Commissioner Burl, so I think that with that, as long as you're comfortable with that, then I'm comfortable supporting this motion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burl, yes?
Yeah. One other thing I do have in the STIPS, that the final site plan and landscape plan be approved by the district commissioner with review from Bells Ferry. So you will get a copy before anything is signed off on the association. And also, when I get notice of this being scheduled for plan review, you know that's public.
Yes.
You can always attend.
We will attend. We realize we can't speak or have input, but we will attend. Thank you for the invitation.
So I'll let you know.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Do you have any other questions? Heard none, I'll call a question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Passes five to zero. With that, adjourned.